Like you said, going out there looking at.
This is Paula, the Christmas party?
Yes. And there, I mean, there are things that are already decided and that's on that information that I sent to you, which is also at the very back end of your.
Part of the agenda we talk about Christmas party. Oh, here it is. Look at there, everybody has an assignment for the committers can bring anything they want.
They wait till four o'clock.
Know what you're bringing. Boy, the eastern time. We already have one employee, that's a great idea.
I was in the grocery store yesterday and there was this woman that bought some eggnog.
Go go on daylight savings.
Anyway, she's coming through the aisle with her eggnog and trade, Paul Pat comes out, he says, that is the best eggnog that you can buy. And I said, well, can you put liquor in it? And the lady goes, well, why wouldn't you then? I said, oh, my God, you're a woman after my own heart. I agree.
No festival hall. Well, you know, the details here, you didn't read this?
Yeah.
Well, before four, that's what we're joking about. Well, before four, because they're all on the plate, on the clock. After that, there's no rule.
Then get an assistant company.
Well, I'm just curious how long do you little stay, I suppose, in the area?
I got a weed board party that night too, supposed to be an harem in the Maddox, so I'm only going to one or the other.
I think all the road department guys will be there, everyone I've talked to said they're coming.
Well. There's no snow to put, so.
It all disappeared over the weekend.
I can't believe it.
That fluff that we got a week and a half ago wound up in South Dakota, Minnesota with that strong northwest wind that we had for a day and a half.
Now it is eight thirty, call a meeting to order, any additions to the agenda?
I'd like to probably put on their, we had the six county meeting yesterday and discuss stuff.
Okay. So Boone Boone will be the spokesman?
He was supposed to do a book report.
Well, yeah. That's Brian's job.
No, no, no.
Six county summary.
Do a book report for him.
Yeah.
Guys don't start arguing as early, yeah. Any other additions to the agenda?
Anyway, we had some good topics here, we should discuss.
All right. Okay. Going through this, keeping procedure real quick, like November regular meeting minutes, any additions or corrections to them? Hearing none, motion to approve?
Oh.
Motion by Boone, second by Brian, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry special meeting minutes on the fifteenth, any additions or corrections? Motion to approve?
So.
Move by Doc, second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry special canvassing board meeting minutes.
And here, obviously, you'll just acknowledge them, but.
Right, I was the only one there, so we can't really approve something where we're not in attendance, so take a look at it, it was very uneventful.
Yeah, reiterate, we had a really, really good voter turnout on election day, we did have a handful of ballots that we were not able to approve, but by and large, excellent voter turnout, all of those people were notified both orally and via the mail of why their ballot was not able to be counted, but meeting didn't take more than a couple of minutes.
Yeah, there was only four ballots in question, there was a reason to not allow them, so. We don't need approval, timesheets for review, Dan, any on the ordinary?
No. To go well for the most part.
Bills?
Very expensive month, as you see, but a lot of those things were to be expected, you have to two payouts to those respective counties. We got a payoff, a bill from Maddox Construction from years ago, so yeah, it's a very expensive month, but as they say, it is what it is.
Pick up questions on, you know, being just got done talking about election, one bills for forty eight hundred bucks, what is that?
Can you direct me to it?
E S N S.
On the first page.
That would be everything from ballots to these memory sticks that go into the machines to it's, it's all things related to the product that you need to have in order to be able to conduct the election.
So every election cost is like over five thousand bucks?
Yeah, that's a pretty fair, you know, and obviously, we had to order a lot of ballots, but buying paper ballots is not overly expensive, but those media sticks and which hold the election on them that go into all of your machines and those types of things, those, those costs some serious bucks. So, yeah.
Okay, the South Dakota, South Central Dakota Regional Council to support, is that once a year?
Yes, and that is on your agenda here today to approve that, and Dennis can, is a, a member of that organization, so he can certainly talk more about what they do than I can, so.
And the North Dakota Association of Counties, is that once a year too?
Yes, that's Workers' Comp, and everybody, every employee group has their own fee structure and based on the employees that we have and where they are situated, you pay a fee to cover workman's costs every year.
Yeah, a lot of counties. Okay, yeah.
On, on the second sheet down, Social Services, where indirect reimbursement, is that one of those payouts?
Indirect reimbursement, that's the money that came to Wells County, but it's still written on the Wells County checkbook. So that's why you see it here, so that's kind of like, it shows here, but it'll also be a revenue for the county, so.
And you get that how often?
That's the one time deal.
Once.
You know, where we paid Foster County X amount of dollars from our general fund, we paid Eddie County from our general fund, but the human service zone had to pay Wells County, but because my office takes those checks regardless if they come from Social Services, it appears on there.
Anything else on the bills? And, you know, Dan always calls me ahead of time, goes over the agenda, and I reached out to him, and I'm not on a bandwagon here, but in the general scope of things, I asked what K L J's bill was going to be for that highway project, and he says, he gets all kinds of them and really doesn't know. I really think that we should have the ability to ask them for a summary of the whole works, and, and along that line, and Wool's going to come in here, we can ask them to, they, I'm sure, probably bill the same way. And I've been on this board a long time, you never can really get.
Straight answer.
Well, you get a straight answer, but you really didn't never get a total dollar amount, now, mind you, on a lot of these bids, they'll take a percentage of the bid, so let me know, but in this case and in other cases, we don't know, and I would just like a summary of the total bill. Obviously, that's not in here, and Dan says he's still getting.
Yeah, that, they just come periodically and, and you see payment for one of them in here.
No, one of them is in here.
Sixty five hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, and, and they come, that, that's probably more than one bill that was sent to me. And I'll get another one a week from Tuesday, and they'll just come out of the blue.
It shouldn't be that hard to, they're working on three projects in, in Wells County, it shouldn't be that hard when they send a billing out to say.
We should only get a bill on one project.
Well, yeah, correct, because we're not paying for the Harvey done, one that's done, correct? And I don't know how, I don't know if, you know, they're working on the bridge north of town too.
We haven't even got any bills, wouldn't have got any bills on that yet, would we?
Because that isn't even a, an approved project yet.
Yeah.
I mean.
They're out there doing surveying and stuff.
Right, they're doing work, but as far as them billing that work, I don't think.
No, they should just.
Everything that's coming is Highway Five.
I would assume, yeah. I didn't say that.
You know what they're, no, no, they're not.
They know they're, they know they're going to get the.
Right, right, it just hasn't been built yet. All right, enough of that, but anyway, that's my, not rant, but my concern that and over the years, it's been that way, you, you never know what these guys are getting paid for, so. Motion to approve the bills, or unless you have any other questions?
Make a motion.
Making a motion by young Brian, second?
I'll second.
Second by Boone, any other discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry, balance sheet, Dan?
All right, so obviously, we're whittling our way down. That's the entire picture, obviously, before all of these bills that we have here, so you know, the, the number one thing, and, and you guys are, are constantly, you know, reminded of this every month, and that it would be the sheet right behind here. You still have those funds that are within your control, House Bill ten sixty-six at just under a quarter of a million dollars, the general fund at three point six two seven hundred. Road Fund, a negative, just over a million dollars, COVID relief, which will pop up here later in the agenda, just over a quarter of a million dollars. That early, Road, just over twenty-five hundred dollars, highway tax, sixty-seven thousand and change, and then there is nothing in the L A T C F. We used all of that for the window replacement project at the courthouse, which is now complete. So all told, those are the funds that you do control, this is what you expect late in the year before your tax revenue starts to come in, is that it starts to get down there. And so it's, it's right where I guess it should be, so to speak, it's a little bit thinner than it probably has been in last few years, but part of that is intentional and, and part of it is things just cost more than they have in the last couple of years, but do you have any questions for me, whether it's based on the balance sheet or on the funds controlled by the commission sheet?
Anything there for us, and you know, and some of these totals on the balance sheet are in and out deals, school districts, ambulances and such, so.
Yeah, and, and, and every, every political sub has been paid now for the final time in twenty twenty-four. And so you will see, well, the school districts get paid every month, but like townships get paid four times a year, ambulance, fire districts, et cetera. So the next time they'll be getting paid will be in February.
That new one with the library, when does that?
For tax collection for the library?
You know, we're funding part of it, what is that?
Yeah. I would say that's one's probably going to get paid in February, and then we'll get, probably get paid like the townships do, because that's not going to be some big amount of money sitting around waiting, the school districts are different, and that's why they're paid every single month, because the volume of money that's going there is substantially different than what goes to the city of Fezden or what goes to Berlin Township or, or anything like that, so it's, it's substantially different. So I, I would believe that the library will be treated like the townships and probably get paid four times a year. And their big payday is going to be in February and March, and then when they get paid later in the year, it's going to be hundred and twenty-eight bucks or, you know, that type of thing. It's whatever gets paid late, you know, they'll get their biggest windfall in those first.
I was curious where that fits in.
So there's quite a few you pay once a year, right? Like, we, like, well, weed board. I mean, that money.
Well, that money never actually goes to the weed board, because we pay all those bills.
I know, but I go, okay, yeah, as a for example.
So, you know, places like the water board or wherever, if, if you see it on this sheet down below, starting, starting with soil conservation and going down there, those are probably paid four times a year typically.
All right. Okay, any questions on that, any questions on the, well, runs into the CDs, we need a pool of the bank CDs and investments? This should be the low now, I mean, we're talking the twelfth of December, new revenue taxes should start coming in.
Yep, and, and it will, and, and we will put some of that into new CDs, in fact, I just spoke with Laura before I came over here to go ahead and contact all three banks and get current rates, and because I believe in the first part of January, we'll start buying some CDs again.
Motion by Doc, second. Second by young Brian, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, carry. Okay, any correspondence, Dan?
There really was not any this month, but I will do this for the greater good of not only the folks sitting at the table here, but those of you in attendance. Taxes are later this year than they have been historically, and that is because of all of the changes that the legislature made. We rely on a, a company in South Dakota, as do most counties in North Dakota, to assist with the setup of our tax statements and including all of the things that the legislature, this was spoken about yesterday at Six County, for the three of you that were there, what has to be on those things, that's governed by Century Code, which is established by your legislature. So they had all kinds of little things that they wanted on there, well, I don't know that they necessarily think about that in the time it takes to set up a tax statement, but nevertheless, we did not get our approval to go ahead and generate taxes until late Friday afternoon. So I came to my office on Sunday, knowing that Laura would be jumping at the bit on Monday morning. Well, little did I know, I contacted her on Sunday afternoon and said I finished generating taxes, and I met her on the highway when I was going back to Harvey, she was coming in, so that she could get started, because their phone has been ringing off the hook. Where's her tax statements? And I mean, they are two weeks probably later than they normally would be, but they're all finished, in fact, those of you that see an envelope in front of you, there are your tax statements.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah, you got. But that said, inside those tax statements, this little handout right here, that little thing right there is your primary residence credit.
Yeah, five hundred bucks.
And I'm speaking with my colleagues all across the state of North Dakota, where people got these, didn't complete the task, and did not qualify for five hundred dollars for the primary residence credit. So whose fault is that? Okay, this is going to take thirteen percent off my tax bill. You've got people that are hopping mad about their tax statement, right? Here's thirteen percent on mine, and this took me, I'm a repeat customer, I think it took me about forty-five seconds a year ago, and it took me about twenty seconds this year to do this. Do this as soon as you get it, now, if your property is tax exempt, you don't, you don't get money back, you don't, then you don't qualify for it. But if you have property that is your primary residence and you don't do this, that's on you, okay? And it's a big deal, so I've already done mine, and, and Renee has taken care of hers in my office, I would direct you to do it. Now, if you've already applied, you don't even need your parcel numbers, but having your parcel number for your house was the only difficult thing about this process, that's why it goes out in your tax statement, because then you'll have the parcel number. So I would do this as soon as you have an opportunity in front of a computer.
What's that?
The next year, that will go to two thousand.
Maybe, or two fifty, maybe. Portfolios, Brian, any reports?
Nothing, I guess, on my end.
Okay, Boone?
On my end.
Okay, I, yeah, yeah. She'll come down here today when she has two abatements, and then she had a minor situation that caused a lot of headaches, and we'll discuss that when, when she comes down here, it's not a big deal, but
Nothing, Brett will report on what we got here.
Okay, Brian?
The fair has dates, and they got a two-year contract for the carnival.
Your other portfolio is?
Our treasurer.
Oh, okay.
Treasurer and state's attorney, everything's good there.
Okay, and he's got court today then, right? Okay, it's not nine o'clock yet, so we should stick with the agenda times.
Why don't we, why don't we take a look at this sheet right here?
Yeah, okay. The next handout, all those boards that everybody's on, different people are on. Okay. Anybody have any questions, you know, and here's the thing, some of these boards don't even meet every year, I mean, I'm on the school reorganization committee, and if there's not an issue, we don't meet, so. Dan, any input there?
Yeah, what I guess I, I want to draw your attention to are the highlighted items, and it doesn't mean that you necessarily have to weigh in or have input, but for example, in district health, and I'm sure district health will deal with this, but Greg Christensen's term is up here in a few days. So whether they, he gets reappointed or not, but since I know the two of you are on the health board, see to it that that gets taken care of.
Okay, yeah.
J D A, they'll take care of their own, but there are four individuals on that, whose terms are up at the end of this year. Planning and zoning, this is an area where I believe last month, a name was chaired that would be willing to join this for that District Five vacancy that's down at the bottom, but myself, Spencer Marchand, and then there is another vacancy from the city of Fezden that have to be reappointed, assuming such. School district reorganization, there are three spots that are vacant there, south side of Harvey, as well as down in District Two, as well as the area that includes the city of Fezden, and you're right, you know, that, that group may not meet again for the next five years, but you don't want to be scrambling to get members, because now you have a, have a situation where you have to meet. Human Service Zone will take care of their own, they have one vacancy there, Water Resource Board will have a vacancy at the end of this year, I would assume that they would take care of theirs, the Weed Board, whomever comes on as a new extension agent would fit into one of those roles, and then Dale Schmitz has a spot that appears to be up at the end of this year, so that being said, again, even though some of these groups will take care of their own, there are others where we need to find people in the event that the board needs to meet, so.
The Wells County Redistricting Board, Kathleen Mearns on that, that probably needs to be.
Yeah, and, and that group, I'll guarantee you, will not meet until twenty thirty-one, and the reason being is there won't be a census by which you would redistrict, we redistricted after the twenty twenty census, and you won't do it again until twenty thirty-one.
There's time to replace.
Right, so think about it.
And I, I guess the other thing that you could conceivably do, or have input on, is, and there is only one group that seems out of touch with, well, two groups that are out of, out of step here, so to speak, and that is in the pay area, Central Prairie Human Service Zone, for whatever reason, is forty-five dollars, which is five less than everything else, with the exception of the Water Resource Board, which is two and a half times what everything else is. So that may be something you might elect to weigh in on, of what those rates are for those meetings.
I thought, this used to be worse than it was, it, it were all over the place, I thought a couple of years ago, we made it all the same.
It was supposed to be have gone to fifty.
It, it should have been all fifty, so Central Prairie, I don't know what happened there.
Who decides that, the commission?
You guys decide.
You mean, you're talking about the South Dakota?
No.
No, Central Prairie.
Backside, back here.
Yeah, I saw.
Oh, yeah. And there too. How often do they meet? Central Prairie.
So, and, and anything you do at this juncture isn't going to be effective until twenty twenty-fives, but at the same time, I, I'm not, I'm not sure why there is a difference, and for the same reason that I don't know why the Water Board is what it is, but.
I can tell you.
Yeah, the Water Board. What's that?
It's in North Dakota Century Code.
Okay. And really, stick up for the Water Board a little bit, that isn't for particularly a meeting, if they do, it's no different than the commission, that if they do things over and above, they do things over and above the meeting time, and that's why that. I mean, zoning, you go to a zoning meeting, it's two hours, you're done, Water Board, you may have phone calls, you may have to drive out, look at something, and that's one of the reasons why that's a little higher. Brian, you want to chime in, you want to make that forty-five, fifty, so it's all the same, what do you, we're going to, now's the time to tweak these. Leave them all the same, change it to fifty, raise them all, what do you want to do?
I guess it should probably be fifty, the same as most of the others, but we do need different ones.
Well, right, so then it's a significant, something that kind of matters, like I said, zoning, I'm a zoning, well, you meet once a year, it doesn't matter five bucks one way or the other, so, you want to make that a motion? Want to make that a motion?
Motion to change the pay to fifty dollars a month.
Okay. Motion by Brian, second by Doc, any other concerns about that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, carry, okay, any other thing that we need to look at?
The, the name probably got to be changed, that one too.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian's in.
Right, yeah, it's no longer in there, Brian is, okay, all right.
Do we put the word in the zoning board now, or do we wait?
Well, there's two vacancies there.
I, I got one guy that'll go into one spot, one spot, do we do it now, or do we wait?
Do we have to approve those? Or does the zoning board approve them? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I, I think it should be appointed by this entity, but.
You have to look at the rules, so, okay, you have someone.
That will go into one of them vacancy spots, he told me, told me he would do that.
Well, he's either. You gotta be in the city of Fezden.
No, no, no.
No, he's in District Five.
Okay.
It's taking the place of the vacancy at the very bottom of the list. What was the name again, it was?
Bob Martin.
That Bob Martin was brought up last.
Yeah.
That was brought up when, after we did that zoning meeting, you weren't here, you were, I, I think you worked it out.
Talked about it last meeting.
Yeah, we did talk about it. Yeah, we did talk about it. And we, we probably wait and put them on now.
Oh, making an emotion?
I'll make a motion to put Bob, Bob Martin, uh, district five in that vacant spot for the zoning.
Excellent, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul, Brian? All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
I don't know what is the rule, a lot, a lot of the boards just pick their own.
But I think ultimately, we, we may get a motion to approve that.
We probably have to approve it.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have to replace Kathleen anywhere? Her name is obviously.
Wow, we do, but like Dan says.
Until twenty thirty.
That group will meet till twenty thirty.
And it would be whomever the state's attorney is at that point. Their, their reason for being there is the legal governance of boundaries and replace on.
Right. Okay. Uh. Let's do one more quick one, number nine. State's attorney settlement.
All right, um, the counter offer that, that came back from there, and this is based on. You know, we had a, we had a, we had paid her out for the day's work in June. Uh, we did not pay anything where she appeared in front of the North Dakota Supreme Court in the middle of June. Because that was after she had resigned her position. So the settlement request from that office is seventeen hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. Plus the laptop that she carried as an employee of Wells County, which has no useful value to the county. So that was virtually a throwaway item. But, uh, your state's attorney has no reason to believe, since this was their proposal, that it will not be accepted. And in exchange, you will waive any present or future claims against Wells County. Um, I would like to see this, uh, done and over with and wash our hands of the entire circumstance, so.
Well, Dan had called me a couple of weeks ago about this and, you know, let's just do it, in my opinion.
I'd make a motion, we do it.
It's time.
But motion by old Brian, that we pay Kathleen's balance of that monthly salary and seconded by young Brian.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or concerns about that?
Can we, I guess in my motion, I should say that we should get it in writing and override. Make sure we have it.
Yeah, I, I think state's attorney, he alluded to that.
Okay.
All right, all those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I suppose against my grain of paper.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. It's good that we don't have something unanimous here, otherwise we couldn't have a board of one. All right. It's nine o'clock, Larry Skipton's on the board, or on the agenda from the water board, uh, before your. What's that? Okay. Um, I guess the reason that we are at your meeting today is just kind of a follow-up, um. To the, uh, November seventh meeting that was here. And, uh, I guess is, um. Uh, our engineer will be online and we're going to talk a little bit about Wells County one. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the commissioners that went out with me and looked at it, for the ones that had time and, um. Unfortunately, we had one that did not want to come. So, um, but thank you to the guys that did. I think you guys have a better understanding of, of how those things work out there now. Um, it's not as simple as it seems. Um, as you got some of the information, what's that?
I'll call it.
Okay, and some of the information that you got in front of you. Um, shows an outline of Wells County one. Um, on those maps and, um. It's our largest drain project in Wells County, it's like forty-two thousand and some acres, so it is quite large. Um, but, uh, anyway, um, I don't know if we got technical problems or what's going on with that, but. Anyway, Wells County one was originally started in nineteen twenty-three. Um, so. I would say it's probably the oldest drain in Wells County, I'm pretty sure. And the reason that it was started was, out west of town here, there's, um, the city has their lagoons out here, just a few miles out. And, uh, I'm assuming it have flooded those lagoon, I didn't, yeah, well, that's, that's a hundred plus years old as well as the, the lagoon is. Um, and there would be flooding issues, flooding the road, um, that's the reason the curves are in the road out there, but there were still continued problems with that. Um. Tammy disappeared, okay, maybe we're not. Fallen with, I'm assuming, your attorney's coming online here, right? Or? Our engineer, was supposed to, yeah. She was just going to give kind of a highlight of the project. Um, anyway, I guess I'm gonna just cover some other things that I'd like to cover first, um. I feel that we, we have some people in the county that, um, well, I guess I don't feel, I know we have some people in the county. That don't agree with our process, um, you know, the way we do things. Um, I don't know how to please those people, um, some of them have complained since I got on the water board twelve, fourteen years ago, whatever it is. And it's still the same complaints today. And obviously, we can't, um, there's nothing we can do about it because the law doesn't allow for us to do, you know, some of the things that they want us to do. And we have to work within the bounds of the law. And, uh, and what's disappointing is, is, um. Brian, you refused to go out with me, you, you.
I was out there with Dale, is that enough?
Okay, now, the question I have for you, what did you guys go look at?
We looked at the whole system.
Everything.
We drove all over.
Okay.
We didn't get all the way south, but I know where that is and I, I did understand what he was talking about. And I didn't, I, I, the day he wanted me to go, I was not able to go, I'm sorry I couldn't, I'm sorry I disappointed you. But I felt that I got the, the scope of what was, what was at hand.
Okay, what's his complaint?
What's his complaint?
Yeah, did you see what he's complaining about?
I looked at the whole thing and I told you and I told him, I'm not on anybody's side here. I'm trying to get information from both sides to make a determination of what's going on, and I have not made that yet, but I'm listening, is that okay?
That's fine, um. I guess. I, I'm not sure where to go with this, but. Obviously, there's, most people in this room would probably agree that you're, you're leaning towards Dale's side. You say that you're not.
Anybody's side till I get all the facts.
Okay, um.
Please don't put words in my mouth.
Anyway. I had these other three guys come out and I, I took them over the whole drain. We looked, we started south of Fesnan, we worked all the way, all the way to Manford. And unfortunately, we can't get up, uh, the stuff online that Jennifer was, um, wanting to do. But as you look at these maps, it calls out like south of town, the Wine Miller Slough, the Schindler Slough, the Eni Slough, the Hirschhorn Slough. Uh, West Fesnan Slough. All those areas were designed in the drain to be holding areas for a short period of time. Which slows the water down as it's moving through this system. You understand that?
I understand that.
Okay. Um, and as far as Dale is concerned with this whole thing, um. We, we've improved the drain going through his pasture. There's, as these guys can attest to, there's no water sitting out there no more. It's all gone. Um. What's that?
That's not his pasture though.
And he's got one out, right west of Fesnan, yeah. Um, and when we improved all that here a few years ago, I told him he needs just to, you know, get somebody in there to spray the cattails. And we have somebody sprays cattails every year. It's never been done. Um, and the trouble with, you know, these complaints and stuff, it ends up costing the taxpayers a lot of money. Um, you know, so, and you still have never been to one of our water board meetings yet.
I didn't know I was welcome.
Oh, Brian.
Hey, wait a minute, just wait a minute, I was the one and you didn't really want me there, so I decided, you know what, it's better if I don't go. Because the one I was at, you weren't very welcome.
And that wasn't actually, it was one that we put on for the public that you were at, correct?
I don't know, you should.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, it's an open meeting, right? Anybody can attend. Yeah, yeah. If we want to speak at that, you need to be on the agenda.
It was an open meeting because you accused me of knowing Charles Tuttle too, and I will say that. But that's water over the bridge now. I didn't know Charles Tuttle, but that was not a very comfortable meeting either that day. That's where he's going with that.
Charles Tuttle meeting.
You asked me if I knew Charles Tuttle at a water board meeting, and I said I do not know Charles Tuttle.
Oh.
So whatever, that's, I, that's what I remember about that meeting.
Well.
Whatever, it's water over the bridge.
Okay, so. It should be under the bridge for water purposes.
Whatever.
Water bar volume.
Under, whatever.
Water and under the bridge, not over the bridge, because then we got a planning issue.
Whatever.
So I guess, you know, where are we going to go from here?
I guess I do have one question. This is what I was determined since I've listened to all the things I've heard. Okay? So there's a drain, there's X amount of acres here and X amount of people that are in this drain, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there's several other ones in this, in the county, correct?
Yeah, total of nine.
Okay. Um, I don't have any problems with cleaning them, doing what's the maintenance, that's, that's all great. The headache I have, and I'm trying to understand this, is I don't really understand. Why all the citizens of Wells County have to pay for all the legal advice that doesn't even affect a lot of them. That's the part I don't understand, because basically. The water board has lawyers and that's, that's fine. But you get those lawyers and they, they teach you how to play the game, however you want to think of it. Well, then, in turn, the people, the, the taxpayers don't have that same advantage, they have to pay for their own lawyers. And that's the part that's, that, that's what I'm coming through with this is I don't understand that, and I never probably will. Because to me, that's kind of a catch twenty-two. Because that day when we were at that meeting, there were four of them on the wall. And I asked one simple question and it took a long time to get an answer. I asked them who owned the water and they wouldn't give me an answer till I pushed it. They all knew who owned the water, but they wouldn't want to say it. And so, once I see stuff like that, it kind of spooks me. That somebody's trying to not bring a forward what should be brought forward, called transparency. And that's what, that's what this is all about. And so, that's my concern for the, for the rest of the taxpayers of Wells County, is what I'm determining.
Okay. Our attorney costs us five hundred dollars a month. Majority of counties that deal with assessed drains, probably ninety, ninety-five percent of them have a attorney attend their meetings. What we do is extremely complicated because there's lot, all kinds of laws that we've got to follow. That's why we do it, so we don't get into trouble.
So that's all they cost is five hundred a meeting, never anymore?
Okay, well, let me finish.
Okay, that's where I'm going.
Okay. Our attorney doesn't cost us anymore unless complaints come up. And when complaints come up, and some of them are not real legitimate complaints, it's just disgruntled people. That's been the same thing for, for years. Um, same issue.
So you're telling the taxpayers, don't send any complaints and you'll get by cheaper? That's what I'm hearing.
You got to deal with these complaints, Brian.
I understand that, but that's the message.
How, how are we supposed to deal with these complaints if we don't use an attorney?
So if someone's in that drain. Okay, and there's complaints from that drain. Should not, the people that are in that drain, should they not be the one, uh, paying for the attorney? Why was the rest of the county have to pay?
Oh, no, 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 Brian, they do pay for it. This, it isn't, the attorney fees are not on a county-wide basis. Why, why don't you explain the, the concept briefly and simply of drain assessment? Okay. Briefly and simply. Okay, we've got this map, forty-two thousand acres.
Right, I understand.
And everybody's, you know, when it was built, they were assessed a fee for the building of the project. Okay? When that project was paid for, then we assess any worse from up to four dollars an acre. If we, you know, we don't do that, we, we do two at maximum is all we ever do for maintenance of the drains. Only people that pay for anything that happens in this county that's inside an assessed drain, or I should say outside of the assessed drain. Is, goes to the general fund, our general fund, if it is not in an assessed drain. Two totally different things, it's like the issue out east of town. Only people that are paying that cost right now are the ones that are in Oak Creek Drain. That's it, it, it isn't a county-wide thing.
Right, so the water board, water board gets money from this assessed drain every year for maintenance. That's on a separate situation.
Yep, and Tammy could show you all that if you want to see it. Every drain is kept separate all the time.
And how many are there?
Uh, there's nine in Wells County.
You get revenue from nine different sources?
Yes.
Okay.
And each one of those drains, the money that comes in from each drain is, is designated to that drain. So there's nine different funds. Yes, exactly. And Tammy does a very good job of keeping that all separated.
Thank you. That's on our balance sheet too, right Dan?
Yes, yeah.
Right, yeah, if you want to look at the balance sheet, those, well, it's WC. Now, and then you, just for clarification too, you will change that assessment, you said you had a max. We, we review that every year. If you have one drain that's got a lot of money, then you idle it back for a year or two. Yep, that's correct. They run out of money, then you. That's correct. Up the ante. Yep. So that there's always. Okay. So everybody. Yeah, and it's law that we can only assess up to four dollars for six years in a row. Also. Probably never get to that max though, do you? We don't, but with what's happened in our county because of some individuals that, um, were complaining about stuff that we've done and went and did things. Outside of what they're supposed to do, um, we have depleted a lot of money this year. This one, one issue that we're dealing with is almost sixty-seven thousand. Um, so yeah, it, we have had to dig into, into reserves to, to deal with that stuff. But. Are we still waiting for?
Yeah, we had, we had some technical difficulties, so we're just.
Anything else, Larry, or any questions for Larry? Okay, if not, we'll. So when everybody, anybody comes to you. If you want, Brian, they come, because they like, seem to like to go to you. Bring them to the water board with yourself. That's what we're going to ask. Right, that's the avenue of how to deal with resolving whatever issue they may have. And get the correct information, right, yeah. Because every time that we got to deal with some of these complaints and, and we've actually, um, started a newer, a new process to try and alleviate some of the expense. It's two thousand, twenty-five hundred bucks every time. And if there's conflict of interest, um, that can be ten to fifteen thousand. So that's the purpose of the attorney. Um, and I can guarantee you that if we don't have a, an attorney that works with us, I am done on the water board. Because I will not deal with that, um, because there is just too many things, too many legal things that we, there's no way that we can keep up with it.
Well, Wells County would be in trouble without it.
Yeah, and, and I think as you're maybe going to hear from some of these people that are here today, we try to do the best job that we possibly can. And I, I hear a lot of compliments on the job that we've done over the last ten years of getting this system to work the way it, well, it does. And, um. And the economic impact that that brings to Wells County is huge. It's millions a year. If we didn't have these drains, especially east. If we didn't have these drains, especially east of Pheasant, like we do today.
You'd have a few sloughs to go around.
You'd have a few sloughs to go around, and the land would be half the value. And half the tax base then as well.
25 to 30 inches of rain is a problem too.
You'd have a lot of roads gone too.
Yeah, right.
A lot of roads would be gone.
Exactly, we know that.
Nine districts, they all have their own specific, unique set of rules also, correct? Or not?
Well, there's operating plans for.
Operating.
Yes, yes.
Terminal.
You're correct. Um, not all of them have an op, well, yeah.
They all do.
They'd all do, yes.
Yeah.
But, they're, they're all a little different. You know, as far as the operations plans.
Okay, all right.
Um.
Yeah, engineer, go ahead.
Hi, Jennifer.
Can you hear us? You're on mute, Jennifer.
Hmm.
I gotta get my phone to text her and say she's not muted.
Control space, see how fast it gets there.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, now I can hear you, Jennifer, I can hear you. Can you hear us? Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
There you go.
Okay, all right. I'm like, I have no mute buttons on my computer, so. Well, I thank you, everyone, for, I guess, being patient with us as we got me connected this morning. Um, I guess I should have just made the drive up there, but that's how it goes, we just never know, um, as far as technology goes. Uh, so appreciate you giving me the time to just kind of talk through, I'm gonna actually talk through specifically more on Wells County, uh, number one. Uh, I believe we're just trying to kind of educate ourselves on that system, uh, why it's there, kind of how it's operated. Of course, if you've got any questions, uh, you know, feel free to try and interrupt me, raise a hand, and I'll, uh, you know, try and answer any questions as I, as I'm going along here. Uh, I am gonna share my screen, I believe I'm on a, probably a giant screen, you know, screen in the room, and you can see, uh, everything here. Let's, uh, get going on here. Uh, I'm sharing, can I get like a yes or something?
Yes.
So you can see what's on my screen? Great. All right, so, uh, I guess I'd like to just start a little bit of the history on specifically Wells County number one. Uh, what you see here would be the watershed map. So, this dark, I would say dashed line around here is the watershed line. There's some non-contributing areas here on the southern end and kind of western end of the watershed, uh, just for purposes of kind of where we're located. Uh, Pheasant is right here where my, my cursor is. Um, and then, of course, you've got 52, uh, right here, so. And then, uh, about the watershed is about seven miles-ish, uh, south of Pheasant. It's kind of that southern edge, and then, of course, that northern edge, uh, from Pheasant, about that five to six miles to the northwest. So, just to kind of give you some geographical perspect, perception here of the watershed. Uh, this contributing watershed is about 57.9 square miles. Um, that's contributing to this location here on, uh, the James River. Just a little bit of history, uh, I, as I was kind of doing some research on this, the, the first part of this drain here, which is just north of the Pheasant Slough, was actually constructed over 100 years ago, um, or almost 100 years ago, back in 1929. And then, obviously, was improved over, you know, a few decades, uh, throughout, uh, you know, the era here. And then, back in 1975, the landowners in the area got pretty serious on wanting to do some water management, uh, in this area. Obviously, you guys are extremely familiar with the topography, it's flat, lots of low-line areas, sloughs, uh, you know, that's very potable country, right? So, uh, they wanted to improve this system, they wanted to have, obviously, inundation of their croplands to be much less ti, uh, less time, so they're not losing, you know, all the money that they were putting in. Um, so, they had, the Water Resource District, uh, went with the State Water Commission, actually conducted a study, uh, between 1975 and 1978 to investigate, um, alternatives to improve the water management within this watershed. How do we control the water that's coming upstream, that's in the southern area of this watershed? And then, how do we manage that water and that discharge to the north? Um, you know, what came out of that study, uh, which was then turned into design alternatives, uh, back in 1978, and then investigated and turned into plans, which was ultimately constructed, and what you see today, um, were some laterals and some designated sloughs. So, there's another map, I'll kind of just zoom in here to, um, you know, this particular area here. So, there's a various, various amount of sloughs in this area that were actually part of the design. Uh, these sloughs were there to temporary and permanently hold water, uh, to help manage the water within the well system. Both to manage the upstream water, uh, and then to, uh, control that inflow and outflow, uh, downstream. However, as part of this project, these sloughs, not only were they, yes, part of permanent storage, but they were also able to be drained. So, these sloughs as part of the project did have some draining component that previously they weren't able to drain, were now able to drain, they just had to be held, they just had to hold water more on a temporary basis. Um, which is why you see those control structures, um, out there today. Uh, I mean, a, as all of these drains go, well, I'm obviously just focusing on Wells One, but all of the drains within Wells County were, you know, obviously there. The, the first reason that they became a drain was helped to do the wa, help water management and to help alleviate fields and adjacent properties from flooding for long, long periods of time that they were seeing, you know, prior to the 1980s. So, I, I guess I, that was just kind of my, I would say, a quick, brief overview of, you know, the, the drain here. Uh, part of these sloughs too, I just want to make a note that they were also part of an agreement with, uh, North Dakota Game and Fish for wildlife. Throughout that process, uh, when they were establishing the drains, uh, there were some environmental interests that the Water Resource District at the time had to abide to, which is, uh, again, another reason for, you know, some of that permit and temporary storage within these sloughs on, on Wells County number one. Is there any questions, uh, thus far?
I don't think so. No, go ahead.
We went over quite a bit of this, Jennifer, before you were able to get online as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I got really educated this morn, this morning, so.
Okay. No other questions for us? Then I think there's somebody here that wants to say something as well.
I got, Larry, I got one comment which kind of opened my eyes. You guys that end up having a lot of preventive acres out there. Even on, last it was real, but there's a lot of preventive acres out there.
Preventive plant you're talking.
Yeah. For on planning, I mean. And, uh, that's an economic loss to you guys, plus grains down the county for taxes also. It's an economic loss.
Mm-hmm.
So, without the grain, it'd be a lot worse than it is.
Yep. For the most part, um, most people are pretty happy with what's going on with that. But there's a handful of individuals that are not happy, and I don't know that they'll ever be happy.
Lots of acres involved.
Yep.
Was there a change made by CP Rail in terms of how the water gets?
Yes.
Under the tracks?
The CP Rail came in, um, last spring and bore two 4-foot pipes through their railroad crossing. Um, never said boo to us, nothing. Um, and as I talked about last time, that was a control point for us. And, um, so, we went back after they did that right away and went back to the state and said, okay, now what have we got to do? And they told us that we don't have to do anything, um, as far as, you know, relocating a control structure. Because there's three 36-inch pipes on, um, 18th Street, um, that are the control point now. Um, they did not, they do not flow as, a little bit more water than the two 36-inch cement pipes that were through the railroad. Uh, we, because Jennifer, you don't have any of that handy, real quick, do you?
I, I don't, unfortunately. I did not look into that before today.
Okay, smooth-walled pipes flow a lot more water than corrugated pipes do. Um, and what kind of a percentage would you say, Jennifer, roughly?
Uh, depends on several factors, but probably say 10% at the high end.
Okay.
I would say there's 10% more flow-through just because they're smooth-walled versus that rough surface on a, a corrugated steel.
Yeah, and then headwaters and everything else make a difference on that as well, so.
Correct.
And I, I'm just curious, and I'm not a scientist or an engineer or anything else, but I'm curious, what kind of event is gonna play havoc now that that change has been made in this drain?
Um, spring of 20, when did, was it 22 that we, no, it would have to been, when did we bore those pipes through the, or that pipe through the highway?
The state highway.
Yeah, um, 22.
Two weeks ago. Was it?
Yeah, you're right. It'd been, yeah, winter of 22, so it'd been the spring of 23. We had, you know, we had a lot of snow that winter, and, um, we, you know, the, the ditch that brings the water from the south going north, um, there's an area that, um, these guys all seen, I took them out, we looked at that as well. And it's, I would say it's probably about 15 feet deep. Well, you take 15 feet of snow, it takes a long time to get that water through there. And when that water finally got to the point of 18th Street where the 336s are, there was a lot of head pressure, so it pushed it. What you saw that spring, you know, the, things can always change, something catastrophic, whatever. What you saw in the highway ditch will probably be as high as it'll ever get. And, and you drove by that every day.
Absolutely, and that.
Yep.
That was so unusual to me, which is, I think, what a lot of this conversation is from.
Mm-hmm.
It's from that particular year, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep, and.
Isn't that one of the reasons why the railroad did what they did?
I'm assuming so. You know, they had no contact with us whatsoever.
No, but if they saw that.
Yep. I'm assuming so, yes.
Now the railroad bed has become a dam.
Yep.
And they didn't want that.
Yep.
And they're not gonna tell anybody else clean that damn thing or something.
They didn't want the damage to their real.
Yeah, yeah, I was getting to that.
Yeah, right.
Um, and now what we did is we also, um, put in place that if we have something like that happen again, uh, we have a contractor that's, that's ready to go whenever we need him to go clean the snow out of that, so we don't have that again. And because we ended up, we did some of that out east of town, out, um, on Oak Creek. We opened up, you know, I think it was about three, three and a half miles of ditch, and things worked smoothly. So, we're just gonna automatically, we get a lot of snow, it fills that ditch, we'll automatically go out there and clean it. It'll be an extra cost, but then we can avoid those situations. That's it?
Any other questions?
Brian Lauf, being our engineers on, do you have any questions for her? I mean, that's now's the time.
I understand now. I thank you for the education.
Okay.
And I will be bringing people to the water board.
We appreciate that. All right, thank you for your time.
Quick question.
Good question. The Supreme Court judgment of 1990 on the river to replace the bridges, how does that affect this?
Supreme Court, I guess I'm not familiar with that.
36,000 acres flooded on the James River. We fought in court for three years. We got all the way to the Supreme Court. The Corps of Engineers said it will be changed, it has not yet been changed.
I guess I'm not aware of that.
Are you vague on, on the law?
What's that?
Are you vague on that law?
The lawsuit was against the Wells County, not the water board though.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, and that's long before my time.
How does it affect this, we're within two miles?
Jennifer?
First time I read it.
Yeah, I guess, I, I didn't, I didn't hear the entire question, can, can it be repeated?
Do you want to step up here, where the mic, where is the mic at?
By Stan, the mic's by Stan.
Oh, right here.
Or just pass it around.
But, I should be, yeah.
In 1990, we had a, a lawsuit against the county to replace the bridges on the James River. And it went through the Corps of Engineers, the governor, and to the Supreme Court. To, to replace the flow back on the river that it was. It has not been changed. How does that affect these drains?
How does the effect that the flow on the James has not been changed from 1990?
Has not been replaced by the Supreme Court judgment that it was supposed to be replaced.
The, the bridges on the James have not been replaced?
There were seven bridges taken out, and culverts replaced, and Texas Crossing put in. Elevations were not put back to where they were supposed to been. How do we address that? And how does that address this drainage?
Well, this would be separated from the, the James River Basin, for one thing, of what you're talking about. Because this is downstream.
Yeah, I mean.
It's two miles.
Obviously, the Wells. The Wells County, yeah, obviously, the, I, I mean, this is pretty, a pretty loaded question, and probably something I can't, you know, answer, uh, you know, in all technical aspects over, uh, you know, this question. But, uh, you know, obviously, I know where Wells One is. I don't know where these seven bridges are in relation to Wells One, so it's hard for me to understand what that impact or what the effect might be with, with Wells One and these bridges, uh, maybe without, I guess, knowing a lot more detail. I mean, we're talking, oh, 34 years ago when things haven't been addressed, and this drain has been, you know, this drain was constructed back in, before 1990. So, even before these bridges, uh, were replaced. So, I, I guess, without a lot more information on where these are, I, I have a hard time answering that question. I mean, the Wells County one, number one, is only, uh, just a, a portion of the James River watershed at, at certain analysis points. So, it, it may have extremely little impact in, uh, in regards to what the, what, what kind of water is actually coming and what kind of event we're even looking at. So, it, it's hard to, if we're talking about a 100-year event, we're talking very, very, very little impact that's coming from Wells One. So, uh, I guess that, and when I'm thinking about the Corps, the Corps is probably looking at it from much higher events. They're not looking at it from a, a small two-year or, you know, 10-year event in which these drains are designed to.
Do these drains end up in the river?
Yeah. Of course, yes.
Well, then, there's a huge impact.
But it's downstream of what you're talking about.
Right on the top of that map, that's the river, is it not?
Yeah, yeah, here's the James right here, yes?
Yeah.
And.
Follow it over two more sections, that all feeds into this.
Follow it over two, two, two sections, do you mean west or east?
To the west. Section 22, section three, as the river goes up, all of this watershed is connected.
I don't think anyone denies that Wells County One is part of the James River watershed. I guess I'm. Maybe, maybe, uh, we could sit down and, and talk further, so I better understand the question, and I can, you know.
I don't mean to interject, but I don't think anybody knows about this 1990 ruling and the details of it, and, and we're not gonna be able to discuss it in a meeting like this, within time constraints and everything else, and I'm not passing the buck, but.
It took us three years in court.
My question would be, why wasn't, if that's the case, and I'm not denying that, why wasn't, usually when a court rules on something, they see to it that it gets done, and why wasn't it done before all of our times, we don't know anything about it?
I agree.
And that's where you'd have to investigate it, and that's really almost a separate issue. Not a water board issue.
No.
It's a county issue in this case.
Yeah.
And agenda-wise, we're on the agenda as this being a water board.
Okay.
Time frame, so. Saying all that. Anybody else?
Thanks, Jennifer.
Are we done with Jennifer? Right? Jennifer, thank you, thank you for educating us, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comment, questions? Okay, we need to deal.
Just one second, Stan.
Let's go ahead. So we came here this morning, I didn't talk to everybody, but I've talked to the, we came here this morning to support the Wells County Water Board and Larry Skippen specifically. We are here primarily because of the mid-November article in the Herald Press on the negative implications that were addressed toward the water board. We fear that with the disrespect shown toward the water board, the water board may be discouraged and not willing to continue to do this very difficult job. Also concerned that a few individuals have tied up a significant portion of the water board's resources with litigation and busy work. The resources the water board has to work with are collected from landowners, and we hope this money can be used to maintain and improve the systems that the water, Wells County, has come to rely on. Wells County and much of the country would be very different if water was not efficiently managed. We need people like this who are willing to put up with significant abuse and still do their best to manage a difficult and necessary situation. They need our support, we're here to offer it.
Hey. Thank you, Kirk. Would you be willing to give that to Neil, and he can do what he wants with it as far as paper-related items? If you're okay with that? I mean, you can summarize it, or, that's just. He writes faster than you can write, I've seen you write. No. If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay with that, okay, all right. Okay, last month, and we tabled it, there was a, a request from Dale Schmidt that we asked for Larry's resignation, and we need to deal with that now. What are your wishes? I'm speaking to the five of us.
I'm making a motion that.
You still want the job?
Well, okay, and, and I'm not, I'm chairman, so I'm not gonna make the motion, but I, I think the water board is simply following rules. And people don't get that. They're not the Lone Rangers out there creating this stuff. They're following rules and regulations that have been set forth by these, I didn't know there were nine, I knew there were quite a few, you know, different, uh,
Drains.
Drains, and it's a thankless job, it's like refereeing, somebody's never gonna be happy, but, uh, I think they do a good job, and I can't make a motion, but I certainly think Larry does a good job.
We do not accept that letter?
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Motion by Doc that. How do you word that? Dan, how do you word that?
How do you word it? Deny the request.
Deny the request, okay, motion by Dennis, second by Boone. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing on all those in favor of Dennis's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Larry, you still got the job. And we do appreciate, for all intents purposes, not only what you do, but what the, what the entire water board does, because, you know.
We have a very good board right now. We've got a, uh, every single member on that board is really good, and they're all trained. We have to go through training every three years to be on a water board now. And the water board job is only gonna get worse, cuz I was in a meeting in Bismarck yesterday, uh, cuz I'm on a legislative committee for, you know, all the different rules that are coming forth, and it's only gonna get worse. Thank you.
Unfortunately, things never seem to get simpler, they always get more complicated.
Okay, so if we got a gap here, and I see Leanne and Larry are here, so let's bump ahead to the fair board here. So why don't the two of you come on up here?
Oh, yeah, ten-thirty, you guys are early. The floor is yours, Larry and Leanne.
Um, I think the question, it's not really a question, but I understand that we want clarification on whose, as far as the fair board, what are we taking care of? What is the county taking care of? Brought my attention that we should be responsible for the buildings, and the care of that, and, uh, the county will still continue to take care of the grounds as they have in the past.
Do you see how disinterested everybody is?
Yeah. Larry, is your self-esteem hurt right now?
Same way in you.
You start talking, people walk out. Okay, a serious note.
It's a good question.
It, it is a good question, and, and Jaleen called me earlier and was concerned, or was concerned about that too, that, that, uh, you can see Brent's concern in that too many man-hours at the beginning of the spring are taken to, you know, work on, on the board, but they're on the grounds when they should be pulling their shoulders and doing different things, but, uh, you want this in writing, or how, how, how do you? How do you clarify this?
Are there any bylaws on? Running of that?
I guess from, just ours, we, to put on the fair, it's not necessarily that we have, you know, specific duties concerning the fairgrounds, that we've just taken upon ourselves as the fair board to keep up the buildings and the infrastructure to the best of our ability, just to be able to have a fair, you know, put on and, and not have, you know, issues. If we don't keep up maintenance on it, you know, we're not gonna have these.
I was reached out to and asked to peruse the minutes in twenty eighteen, and I believe twenty fifteen, looking for something specific that would clarify this, and I found nothing. I did find something in the middle of the year in twenty eighteen that said that this was brought to the attention of the commission and was tabled, and now's the end of it, there is nothing else. So, hearing that, I guess, based on everything that I've collected and so on, is that other than the festival hall, which is, and should be under the auspices of Wells County, that all other structures out there should be their responsibility.
Correct.
Whether it's for improvement, or dealing with removal, or, uh, whatever the case may be, that becomes your responsibility.
That's pretty clear, right? That, that's, that's.
And the grounds, I guess, and festival hall would be Wells County's, in other words, your issues to deal with. Now, that being said, before I get way a whole lot further here, I keep hearing this, uh, idea about constructing a new fence which would be on the grounds, and that is not something that Wells County is prepared to be involved in.
Right.
So, from that perspective, uh, maybe you can get one of these folks to make a motion to clarify what it is you want clarified.
Right, what specifically are you asking?
Regarding?
What you should do, or what we should do? Be specific as far as.
You know, everything that we've done with buildings, the county's always been there to assist if it's a removal. I mean, the guys show up, equipment, take care of, you know, debris, whatever, and it's gone, and it's out of our way and out of our concern, so that's not, that's been nice. Um, like the women's building, for instance, is mostly a wood floor, which is in bad condition. Um, we've talked a lot about maybe just taking that all out and doing cement. Because, you know, then it's a one-and-done deal, and we've had issues with animals underneath of it and everything else, and so I don't know when that project would happen, but if it does, then we could give the county to help removal, or, or even at least getting rid of the stuff, you know, then we'd have a contractor put a cement floor in it, and.
Should be raised about a foot too, shouldn't it? The whole building should be raised about a foot, is the sill shot?
Yeah.
And it should be raised a foot or more, I think.
I think you're continuing, you.
Yeah, I mean, the, the road department, like, for instance, when the old, the little grandstands was taken down, the road department took it down. You know, we hauled it out, that, that isn't an issue. Um, and I don't want anybody to think that I don't want, or the road department doesn't wanna help out at the fairgrounds either, because it's obvious, I think, to everybody here, that the road department does take a lot of pride in that fairgrounds. It's just that our resources in the spring, I feel, should be on other portions. Unfortunately, the fair is in the middle of the end of June, and depending on the winter, we get strapped with where we need to be in so many places at one time, once the fair's over and, and, and we get into the fall, keeping the fairgrounds mowed once every two weeks or whatever is no issue.
Right.
But prepping the fairgrounds for the Wells County Fair in May and early June is very time-consuming, very time-consuming.
I think that's the area of concern, or that's where you heard.
So my question would be is, is can, you know, can, can somehow we work something out where a guy is hired to do a lot of that mowing and a lot of that work in May and June, so more of the road department guys can be out-patching highways and doing what they should, yes.
And we talked about that, and we talked about hiring someone part-time.
Yes, and as far as the fence goes, you know, yes, it was our idea, it was my idea, and the road department's idea to take that fence down along Highway fifteen. And it needed to come down, it was shot, there was nothing left of it. I mean, it didn't take long to take down. Um, there's been no fence on the east side of the fairgrounds, to my knowledge, for about twenty-five years. Um, the reason I know that is, is because I accidentally drove through it nineteen ninety-five, it was there on the east side, but, uh,
Was that, was that after the sun went down?
Yes, it was, uh, and we fixed it, uh, but anyway, there has been no fence on the east side of the, of the fairgrounds for at least twenty-five years. Um, and if you, if you notice the fence being gone now, it is a big advantage to not have that fence on those trees there, because the snow blows right through. And, and it, you know, I mean, the only reason to really have a fence there would be for two or three and a half days of the fair, and when you don't have a fence for twenty-five years on the east side, what's the purpose of having a fence on the north side?
So I guess, I guess that if the fair board, and I'm just summarizing now, guys, if, correct me if I'm wrong, if the, what, fair board has a concern about you guys doing and having to do more work, I don't think that's the case. I think our concern was that we want the road department to be out in roads in late May and early June, like Brent said, but we talked about hiring someone part-time for the mowing and prep work, instead of having those people do.
We have a genuine interest.
I don't think we're asking you to do more work than you're currently doing.
It's just as, it's just gonna be an extra employee, somebody's gonna have to pay this gentleman, or woman, person, to, you know, whoever would, would get that job, you know, who's gonna pay for that?
I think the real question here is, is a fence part of the grounds, or part of the buildings? Am I right, Dan?
Yes.
That's, that's the question.
What was the whole purpose you want the fence just backed, or?
Well, for events, uh, you know, any, anytime there's animals out there, chariot races, whatever, the idea on the north end being right by the highway is if something just, and we realize for years, they've, they've been able to go east if they wanted to, there's nothing containing them there. But just that uh, possibility, you know, and also it's a little bit of the idea that we have a lot of people that park across the highway, you know, around Lloyd's, uh, management there and whatnot, so walking in, I mean, of course, it's a free gate, but, uh, I don't know, just concerns about people just coming through wherever, but there is a substantial ditch there, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, I mean, rea- as far as item number one on the list, this is just my opinion, I do understand your concern of, of a horse getting, getting, you know, loose during a chariot race or something, uh, you know, a three-hour event. So, I mean, the amount of money to construct a fence for literally three hours a year, to me, I think, is asinine. And as far as somebody coming around to get into the grandstands free, whether there's a fence there or not, all they do, all they need to do is walk around the women's building and walk behind the festival hall. Whether there's a fence blocking the highway, or, you know, so I, I think item two shouldn't be a concern. And so it comes down to item one of an animal getting loose towards the highway. You're talking about constructing a fence for a couple hours a year. And the benefit of that fence not being there for three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year, I feel money, not, not just financially, but overall, for the fairgrounds, for the water, that drainage ditch that runs there where that fence is, that water comes from Senex, and from the fairgrounds, and the, 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 the water, the drain tile that is inside the track pumps into that ditch. Just like Larry said, with these ditches filling with snow, if everything blows through there, that ditch is gonna open up soon, right? If there's a fence and trees there, that snow is piled up to six feet deep there, and, and the truck plows are trying to throw it up against, now everything blows through. And, and I think the, the, you know, not having a fence there, the options, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, far away, the options of having a fence there for a couple hours a year.
The one thing I'm, I think it looks good without the fence there. One thing they may have looked at, you know, there's tons of panels around, fairtime, just set a row of panels up along there. Would alleviate, alleviate the animals getting.
Pre-standing panels.
Just an idea.
Right.
And then they can pick them down. They're easy to move.
I just, a permanent fence just, is gonna, in the long run, I think is gonna cause more problems than good.
How much footage?
Uh, it's about five hundred feet?
Seven hundred, seven hundred.
Seven hundred, uh, if you go all the way to the front gate, yeah, correct. I was, I was basically measuring from the back of the festival hall over to the.
All right, any other concerns?
Well, I think we need, I think we probably need to clarify that we're doing the grounds, and they got building and stuff. We need to clarify that probably for the minutes.
I mean, Brent is still gonna help, or your crew.
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's a project at the festival hall, or at the fairgrounds, that needs a loader or something, we send a guy out there immediately, Larry knows that. I mean, we, we've taken down buildings, we, we still continue, continue to do that.
Right.
Well, and Brent also brought it to our attention to try to do projects after the fair.
Yep.
So it's faced with.
The projects that were done this fall is awesome, that's less stuff that has to be done in the spring. I thank you for, for taking initiative on that.
Right. So we're all, we're all understanding that the fence is, is buildings. Just make that clarification, so everybody knows.
Fence is building, well, if there is no fence.
If anybody does try to do anything, cuz there's a, they're on the west side, there is a, there is a fence there right now on the west side along, along the fence, I'm just, I'm just making sure that in the minutes it's clarified, so they don't have to go back and say, well, this and this. The fence is part of the buildings.
If you went out and did a so-called fence inspection, like a bridge inspection, the fencing that's back by the Aunt Barnes, and along the west side of the fairgrounds, is actually in pretty good shape until you get up closer to the FFA building and the museum. It's in tough shape over there. But where the animals are, for the most part, during the fair, that fence is, I'm not gonna say it's in grade A condition, but it, it's, it, it's worthy of, of what, that, you know, where all the animals are is in the southeast corner, or southwest corner, pardon me, basically during the fair.
And I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm favorable, either way, I'm just saying make sure in the minutes it's clarified, so from here on, everybody can know where they're at. That's what I'm.
Leanne, you had a comment?
Um, getting back to the person who's gonna do the lawn mowing and, and things like that, is that gonna be the county then, doing the hiring?
I think that was our consensus.
Do you guys want some input now?
No, I just, so we, we know, cuz like, it was said both ways, that, um, you know, like, supposedly we get money from the county, we should pay for our own person to do the.
Want me to read what I have here?
Yeah, read what you.
Hey, you're, so one of you is gonna have to fill in the blank here, but, uh, to grant the fair board governance of the fairground buildings, except festival hall, along with any fencing, and Wells County would be responsible for the grounds and festival hall.
We're good with that. Right?
I think that just is.
Wells County has to pay for whoever is hired.
So somebody also reached out to me about renting out space and buildings, and I said, Wells County has no interest in renting out space in any of those buildings. So this would, that's on you, if you guys wanna rent out space in those buildings.
Any of that stuff, none of that's changed.
Festival hall.
It's just the maintenance part.
Yeah.
And Brent, you've got somebody that wants to do that possibly?
And on that level, would it be someone who does more than just the lawn mowing?
Yeah, the, the, the gentleman that wants that job is gonna retire from the road department and has been doing it for the last seven, eight, nine years. Out there, he's been the head guy that's been keeping the fairgrounds in the shape that it is in. And he wants to retire the spring of twenty-five, and he wants to mow the fairgrounds, and he wants to take care of the, the grounds of the fairgrounds. And he is also an ex-county employee that can run the payloader, the skid steer. And when he needs a hand for a couple hours one afternoon, because he bit off more than he can chew, our guys are prepared to go out and help him.
And it's way cheaper to hire someone part-time to do that than to use the road department to do that.
Absolutely.
And it basically, a- and I, I want you guys to understand, a- as far as the road department, as I said earlier, we want that fairgrounds to look great for the Wells County Fair, and we have tried very hard for the past many years that we've been taking care of it, to even improve every year to make it look better than we did before. And that's why we wanted to take those trees down, and that's why we wanted to take this fence out. And it's why when you guys call and you're gonna remove this building or, or move this building, that we're there to help. Because, you know, I mean, I've been a resident of Wells County for fifty-two years. This is my hometown and that fairgrounds, I have lots of good memories there, I don't wanna see it not look good.
All right, okay, anything else?
Just the, uh, just to mention that the grandstand, um, you know, we've started some fundraisers, we don't know how far off that is, if it's two years, five years, whatever. And we also have a couple of different, um, companies looking at ways to either fix it or take it down, redo it. We would never do anything with that moving forward without the consent of you guys, because that's a
That's a big.
Big thing, you know, so, um, just be aware of the work on that, and we don't know what direction it's gonna end up. Do we renovate again what's there, or do we start over? We don't know, but we're looking at some numbers, so.
But that being said, that would be a fair board's, you know, influence and spearheading it and so on. Uh, Wells County may ultimately contribute to a project like that, but I don't think the impetus is gonna come from here. And that would be your guys' territory.
Well, and typically, or there's been cases in the past, in a project like that, you come to us for money or for support or something with a big capital project. 'Cause that's, we're not talking small dollar.
'Cause that I did find in the minutes was various times when the county contributed to.
And that's happened when a move came, not, not so long, what, I, I don't remember what it was.
Bigger.
What you built.
Well, I wasn't, I, I would assume it was the construction of the vendor building where the old grandstands used to be, correct?
Oh, yeah, 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 that was.
What, um, if I may ask, what is the plan for the lawn barn up on the hill?
We don't have a plan, I mean, we don't, as the board, we, I don't.
Historical society decided not to want to
Right.
renovate it or, 'cause they had come to us.
They'll take it down, that lawn barn.
They, I don't think Historical Society will do anything with it.
Is it for sale?
Well, it's county properties.
Yeah, so.
Well, I guess my question is, if the historical soc- society doesn't want to get involved in it or renovate it, would the next step be to take it down? Because it will eventually pose a hazard out there, it's already leaning. And there's rough panels falling off, and if no money is gonna be put into it, then not only for safety concerns, but most importantly, safety concerns, we either gotta, at some point, barricade it so nobody can get back there or get rid of it.
Well, that's a fair board issue.
Right, and I guess I'm just asking, because there, that would be a project that the road department could do in an easy winter.
You ain't got a ballpark idea how much would cost renovate that?
No idea, but I think first of all, you'd have to start with the foundation, 'cause it's falling apart. So there you gotta lift it up and,
Right.
you know, put a foundation under it, get it squared up, and so we have no idea, but we don't feel like we wanna pursue that, we've got bigger problems, you know, with the grandstand itself.
There's a lot of good lumber in that building.
Yeah, it's just minimal storage and mostly my county guys, so.
I'm gonna interject something for the fair board to think about. I have a really, really good friend that moves buildings. Moved a lot of buildings, he's moved buildings for his whole life, and his grandfather moved buildings his whole life. And I asked him if he would come up and look at that barn to see what it would take to move it, and if it was movable. I'm just having him come look, that's all. He's just, he's, he's a good friend of mine, he said, I'll stop in and I said, I'll look at it. He's fixed more of them things than anybody I know, and I've seen a lot of his work, and it's really good, so. He will be probably coming here in December just to peek at it and give me an opinion, that's all I'm after. So, that'll be.
Right, there you go, all right, anything else?
Just telling you, so.
Hey, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thanks, Ray.
Hopefully I clarified everything.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
I think the rest of them are gonna come back in now when I leave.
Actually, two, two, three, two or three, it's kind of surprising, Larry, two or three guys text me and says, is Larry done yet?
Which Larry, though?
All right.
Do you, is this a consensus, or what are you, what are you doing with this? Because I want it reflected here, so.
Consensus, right.
I think that clarified it all up pretty well.
You know, and I think.
If they decide they wanna put a fence up, they can.
That's right, they can. I, I think they just got the wrong impression last month, and we talked a little bit about that you were gonna abandon them, or we were gonna abandon them, yes, you know, I heard comments like.
It's the, it's the, actually, it's the snow and all that issue in that short little steep ditch there.
Well, no, but that wasn't their concern, maybe he talked about that the road department couldn't help as much anymore.
Charge of buildings and.
They were making it sound like then they were gonna take, have to take turns mowing as board members.
Wow, no.
So it's just.
Well, they have enough board members on the fair board, they could do that, I have fifteen of them.
No, there's only twelve.
Only twelve, they're looking for three more. All right, Ken, Jason. We're gonna put Brent on the back burner, 'cause he's always long-winded.
Uh, not today.
I haven't heard that before.
You've already had.
You've never heard that out of my mouth.
You've heard it out of your mouth, you've just never carried through.
Oh, we're gonna get Christmas presents.
That's Christmas. How's everybody today?
Good. Coming down.
Ken?
Sorry about that. Yeah, sorry about that, too.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We were giving Brent about, about him being long-winded, and he said, not today, and I said, we'll see it. We'll see it, and now we're heading out and giving you gifts. Other than I gave him a present.
Yeah, we always forget to make that.
Thank you.
Did everybody else?
I think so.
I know, you never have it, you know, you guys do have national banners.
Thank you, sir.
Jason.
These are really nice.
I'll take one of them, all right.
Okay, the floor is yours.
We just have a couple things really for you folks, so.
Well, I have this, so.
Jason start.
At the same time here. Um, we've been running these out to the other counties now, too, just so you guys can get a look at it. We did a twenty, Divide County asked us to do a twenty-year plan a few years ago, just so they could kind of budget, um, plan ahead and budget. And it's something they use now when we go into like an end-of-the-year planning session. Um, just gives a breakdown of all their paved roads, how old the pavement is, when the last work was performed. And then what I did from there was kind of look at the history of each road, and then we put together a five, uh, like a zero-to-five-year plan, a six-to-ten-year, eleven-to-twenty-year, and some costs. And this just helped them kind of figure out what a road and bridge budget for them should look like. And obviously, it, it's kind of a wish list, in a sense. Um, we've already made changes to it in the three years since we've done it a little bit, but, uh, it gives them a good starting ground, I guess, to start off of. Um, so we didn't know if you guys would be interested in doing something like, having us do something like that. Uh, we actually would do that, I guess, free of charge, if you guys want to look at doing something like that to get organized. Um, and we, you know, we can do it a little differently, too. Like I said, we did this as, they wanted me to evaluate it, you know, as a wish list, essentially, best-case scenario, don't worry about where we're at budget-wise, put together what you think needs to be done, and then we'll kind of, you know, go off of that as far as what we can afford and what we can't, and I don't know if that's the way you guys would wanna look at this, or if it would be more of a, here's what we can afford. No, well. Type of, you know, there's a couple different ways to evaluate.
I really like that top part, though, where it's, especially last work performed, that, that tells you, you know, and, and Brent had a lot of this information, but just lays it out nicely. I'm surprised Divide County has that much pavement.
Yeah, well, we've added quite a bit of pavement.
They've been adding a lot into the oil.
Yeah, that.
What do they think?
Oil money.
They got oil money.
They're, they're at the opposite of you guys, where you guys had inherited a bunch of pavement, they didn't have a whole lot.
Thinking's a lot different when you get over.
Okay, what do you guys think? Would you like something like this? I mean, is, well, they're gonna do, do quite a bit of work, so if, if you feel it's useful, and I think it is.
Definitely nice to see it on paper, I guess.
Yeah, you just don't have the wish, but it wants this part or that.
Permanent template in your permanent file that you, you can go back to and, and take a look at.
Pick, pick which is more.
Right.
More feasible at the time.
I have most of the stuff on the top.
On the top, the bottom.
I can tell you everything that's been done to the county pavement, the last work done on the pavement, whether it was a chip seal and overlay or whatever, I, I have that up in the office, and on the computer.
At the bottom.
But the bottom, I have no idea, that, that, that's more for you guys to, as far as planning.
Well, right, that would be our projection.
That part would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And it will take some time, so I don't have a timeframe yet for this, but I think we're trying to get one of these done for the, for the counties we work in, just so we've got a plan.
All right.
For you, Dennis, nothing.
You guys are getting a bargain on that one.
What do you guys, how, how do we stand with what's gonna happen on the east end of five?
Yeah, so that would be the next thing here, uh, we're in the middle of design. Um, I think we've got the design essentially completed, the extensions are figured out, all of that.
The extending was piped out?
Yep, yep, so I think we're there. Uh, we've got a lot still to do with the wetlands and getting that figured out with the core. Uh, we do have the information back now for the, for the jurisdictional determination that's pulled from the core, but there's still quite a few hoops we've gotta go through there, so that's kind of where we're at. Design is, design's done, plans, plans aren't done yet, uh, we've gotta get that done, but a lot of the planning, a lot of the setup of the plants that can't be done until we get things done with the core, so.
When are we looking at?
Bidding.
Bidding in April, May.
Question I would have for you, probably the soonest we could bid it would be April. Um, do we wanna shoot for that? I don't know financially what, what your plan was there, 'cause as of now, that's.
Depends on what it costs.
It's a, it's a CP job, uh, what did I give you guys for estimate?
To add to that, and, and maybe you'll get it cheaper, maybe you won't, will there be a mill set up? Are they gonna redo fifty-two this coming year? The overlay, you heard it on the news here a month ago.
I've heard both, I've heard they are, and then I've heard it might get pushed back, so I, I don't have the answer for you, or I guess we don't, but.
When I look at the bid openings in, on the DOT, the list they have through May, I don't see that project.
And normally you probably would, considering it's four months away from bid opening.
Should by now, but we've also heard from the district, we, that it was gonna get done this year, so.
Well, I was on the news, couple, three places, and you talked to different, we department people, and that all of a sudden this federal money is thirty million dollars came, or is gonna come.
Yeah.
You heard that, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, they have all the passing lanes now done from Carrington to Minna.
Correct.
So now this is just a driving lane improvement mill and fill, basically.
Besides Velvato Mine, I know they're still figuring that out. They apparently want a foreland, the county is requesting foreland, I don't know if you heard that.
No, for Velvato Mine.
That's why they haven't done anything there yet, is 'cause Dana's requesting foreland, so.
Well, anyway, I, that's off the subject, but if they set a mill up closer, you would think that bid.
That should help us.
Sure, we'd wanna bid next spring.
Yeah.
Although it's not a real big project, if we can haul it.
So that's a question I have for it, is it worth setting a date yet, or do we just kind of? We'll continue on as if we are bidding.
What do you wanna do, you wanna pave it this next spring or not?
I think considering you have to deal with the water there, wouldn't that project be best suited for the end of the summer?
Yeah.
Well, but you, you'd probably bid it in April.
Right.
Yeah, nothing ever gets done until October.
They got, they gotta start as soon as they possibly can on most construction, but I think this is a project that's way better served.
Right, oh, yeah.
And typically, a job that's bid in April or May won't get started until August or September.
Right.
The, the issue that maybe you guys should consider is, is can, does this project, does that mile and a half need to be red- redone in twenty twenty-five? I don't know.
No.
It ain't hurting a damn thing the way it is right now, but when it comes to paying for it, at what year are you gonna be paying for this bridge north of town? Is that twenty-six or twenty-seven? Because if you push this off from twenty-five to twenty-six, then all of a sudden you have two projects in twenty-six, and you're looking at money, I know which project's gonna get pushed off, and it's gonna be the project up north.
Well, we'll get prairie dog money in this coming year, so.
Hopefully.
Well, we will, you know, when he's at night market, so, so it's just a matter of.
I think you guys probably have that prairie dog money earmarked, basically almost all of it, correct, Dan?
Half, half of it will go to this project. And we do now have a capital funds project.
For the bridge.
Which will be there for the bridge piece, which will be four or five hundred grand. But, um, so, yeah, you know, and there was discussion, and there will continue to be discussion until the legislature actually does it, I won't believe that it's actually gonna happen, but they wanna move that prairie dog fund up near the front, not at the front, but near the front, so that these become resources that will be available to us on a biennial basis, so hopefully that's a good sign.
A for-sure deal.
Because this was in place, you know, this last biennium was the first time we got money. That bucket's been there a lot longer than that, so they never filled before, like they have now the last couple times.
When oil prices are thirty dollars a barrel, that bucket ain't getting pulled.
But if that bucket moves towards the front of the line, then there's a reasonable assurance that it'll be there on an ongoing basis, so.
The other thing to consider is, by pushing this off, odds are it's just gonna increase the price.
Well, right, so, if we have to do it sometime.
The sooner the better.
The only other closest paving that I know that the counties are doing, Benson County, is redoing the curves east and south of Maddock.
That, that is, that's plenty close enough.
Yeah, that's plenty close.
That's closer than.
That's closer to this fifty-two.
That getting done next year?
Yeah.
Supposedly.
South of Maddock, are we doing them?
That's about, that's about seven, eight miles.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's supposed to be bid in May.
Okay.
That's the best I can tell.
That's, that's actually good news.
So I wondered then if we'd be better off to wait till that job's bid, then, we might have to get a bid date there. So I wonder then if we'd be better off to wait till that job's bid then, we might have to get a bid date there.
I don't almost think May might be better for bidding.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Oh, right, we don't wanna, we wanna.
Bid after.
Bid ours after.
We might wanna bid it after there, so we'll get a bid date on that one if that's.
No, I think that's through DOT, but I'll check.
So that's close, you you wanna hard firm, we need a motion then if.
I don't think I need firm today, I just for my own sake, I wanted to know as far as with the core and what we're dealing with if we're looking. April was gonna get pretty tight, May, if we were shooting May, I should be fine, we'll just.
I think so.
We'll just say.
So consensus is to do it this year and do it after that.
The bid on.
Work it in with them.
Work it in, yeah, okay.
That's as good as I need for now.
Okay.
All right. That's all I have for you, do you guys have anything more for us?
And we were gonna ask him about. Was it Wald we're gonna ask about the the billing?
Oh, yeah, how do you guys bill?
Wait, let let's see. How can I say this, uh if you do work for us, you typically take a percentage of the bid, right?
Correct.
If you didn't and and did any kind of work, how do you do you use? Yeah, how do you bill, is it one bill at the end, is it money up front, is it based on? Piecemeal as as the project goes along, or does it depend on? Are you confused by my question?
Yeah, if you're if you're just hired as the engineer, you didn't do the project, you're just if you're just engineering it.
No, it's the whole project.
I know that, but.
Because it gets prolonged, the bills.
Yeah, but they're bidding on a percentage.
Why?
Basically one big bill or do you split up bills?
Based on the work you do.
The easiest I could explain typically like a eight percent contract on a paving job. It's for preliminary and construction engineering, so we would not send you a bill for preliminary engineering until the project has been bid and awarded.
Okay.
And then once construction starts, typically we do it monthly based on how much work the contractor has done.
So it's a monthly bill then?
I if it's gonna be a three month project for construction, we would bill you monthly.
Okay.
But what's the project Wells County's doing or not, three month project?
A typical paving job is two to three weeks, so say if they're done by middle of July, we'd send you the majority of it. For your August meeting.
Alright.
And then there would be would be some retainage based on the contractor's work, so we would just final bill that November, December, whenever the paperwork is all done.
Okay.
I guess if that answers your.
Yeah, 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 it does. Because we we come at the and whether it's you or K L D or whoever, you come in and we approve these bills while it's a bill while it's. For part of and so everyone are confused, we're just gonna go.
Gotcha, that's typically what we do.
Well, then if the.
That helps, thank you.
The contractor's through the state, then obviously it's a completely different thing because. We have to submit our hours into the state and you get rights, I mean, so.
Alright, you bill the state different than you.
That gets a lot different, well, I'm saying if it's a Wells County job, but it has federal aid.
Right, then then it's.
Now it's the contracts through the state that actually.
Right, right, okay, alright.
Any other questions, sure? Anyone?
No, thanks for coming, guys.
Alright, thank you, you guys have a good holidays.
Yep, I'll give you a call, thank you.
Anybody wanna break or do we forge ahead?
Anyone need a box?
Know what I mean to break, okay, Brent?
Okay.
You're up.
You guys seen, I'm assuming it, uh we bought a snow plow from Gary Call. Okay, so we had a two way plow, we had, we didn't have an accident, nothing that could be filed through insurance, but we did. Wreck a plow, um we burnt a frog off, a guy had lost cutting edge, didn't catch it right away, you can burn a frog off in a matter of ten miles if you. Mess up, it's not the first time it's been done, it certainly won't be the last. So we were short of plow, um we had an old plow that the we burnt a frog off five, six, seven, eight years ago. Anyway, we bought a plow from Gary Call for fifteen hundred dollars, it fit right onto the truck, good, we're good to go. Now, we're gonna fix these two plows, these frogs on these two plows. And but in past years, we would completely revamp. Right in our our guys would do it, put a new frog on everything, it was brought to my attention that now you can buy these frogs from Falls Manufacturing. So Little Falls in Minnesota, so I called them, they said, yeah, and I said, so we're not the only ones that do this, and they said, no, it happens all the time. Okay, so that made our guys feel better, cuz we make mistakes, we're all capable of it, so we um we. Ordered parts, we're going to Little Falls next week for two new frogs and some, they're they're eight hundred bucks a piece. Normally you would take the plow down to Falls and they would do all the work, we got welders here, we're not gonna haul our plows over there. And then go back and get them two weeks later, we're going down to get the parts and our blade guys and stuff are gonna fix these two plows, okay? So when that happens, this plow that we bought from Gary Call, then will be made into a speed plow. And one of the plows that we're gonna fix is gonna be made into a speed plow, these plows have been, these guys have been making in in Harvey. Harvey's gonna take one of the plows, they're gonna make another speed plow and I'm gonna have a gravitation crew here in Feslin with Bob and Sean. And they're gonna make a speed plow, so this fifteen hundred dollars that we spent on this plow, it's a stopgap till we can get the one fixed for the truck. But then we're gonna use it for a blade, okay, you guys all understand that, okay?
There was a test on that, we wouldn't all pass.
Well, I'm trying to talk fast, you know, because I'm always up here too fast.
I am.
Okay, I don't have any questions on the fairgrounds anymore because they were answered at the fairgrounds meeting. Um with when the fairground board was here, um so just letting you know that these frogs and stuff. We're going to be going to get them next week, it's gonna be about twenty five hundred dollars in parts, they wanted eleven hundred dollar shipping just to ship those two frogs. We said we can drive to Little Falls, and that's where we're going, um our shop inspections are done, as soon as we get these two plows fixed. Which will take a couple of weeks, by the time we get everything here and moved around, we're gonna start doing our sign inspections that we have to do every year. Now, I know Tim has talked to Dennis, we have roughly. Three thousand to four thousand dollars that we need to put into our chip spreader. Okay, that's an, it's not a new piece of equipment, it's twenty five years old, I think it's, I don't even think it's a two thousand model, is it?
I doubt it, I don't know.
So, you know, it's it's our main machine that we use the chip seal highways. And I guess before I order these parts, I just wanna make sure that we're on the same board, cuz I know questions have arose at past meetings. As to why are we just spending this money chip sealing this highways? And I don't wanna go and buy three, four thousand dollars of parts if we're going to look in the future as to not. Doing as much chip sealing, okay, I feel that the chip sealing that we do. Is what's holding a lot of our old pavement together. And I I in my opinion, I think we need to continue to do that, even with the raising cost of oil and everything. I think we need to earmark, you know, ten miles a year or twelve or whatever, and if that's the case, then. Obviously, we need to put this money into the chip spreader and we will, we will order the parts and these guys will fix it, we're not gonna ship this thing off to Fargo and. We're gonna do it, that's what these guys do when it's not snowing, they build stuff and they fix stuff.
The consensus is to get it fixed.
Hold it fixed so you can useable.
Okay.
No good if it ain't fixed.
Okay, so other than that, um we have been running highways with the plows. But we have not really sent the blades out to go around the route yet, um we've had some dustings of three, four inches here and there. And in number one, gravel is a premium and these townships don't have a lot of money and and. We're just not gonna chase around on these gravel roads and throw gravel a ditch because there's a little drift here, a little drift there. Early in the year, what the blade guys have found, and they've gone out and checked some spots, is the same thing that we preach every February. Where they did a poor job of mowing is where the snow is on the road. And where they did a nice job of mowing, there's not hardly any snow on the road. So we are not sending the plows and blades out probably as much as we have in the past, but we're trying to cut back in the road department too. We're not gonna waste fuel to go out there and put on a show, and it's the same way with the trucks, if we get a dusting of a quarter inch of snow and the wind's blowing. It makes no sense to go burning cutting edges and everything off the trucks, but we will maintain the highways we need it.
You hear that argument, well, they're getting paid anyway, you should do that, no, they shouldn't.
Stuff breaks.
Rather have them doing nothing than to go out there and waste fuel.
Stuff breaks in the way.
Burn frogs off?
Burn frogs off, yeah.
Wherever them shoulders are, you know, in the spring, everybody pulls them a little bit, the more they pull every spring, the less snow there is.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Cuz it 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 gets that edge off of there.
Basically, if you drove around in your in your area, uh after these little dustings of snow. You can see exactly where the snow is on the road and ninety five percent of the time, you look into the ditch and it'll tell you why there's snow on the road. Because they did a poor job of mowing.
Mowing's gone downhill.
It's gone, it's gone way down, so other than that, guys, what do you have for me?
Questions for Brent?
Well, I have a question, I gotta, on the county road out there by Lills.
Yep.
That ditch is gonna have to get cleaned whether Richard Leese is down on the other side or not.
Okay.
That ditch needs to be cleaned, was it four hundred feet?
Yeah, six hundred maybe.
Six hundred, I I didn't.
It's less than, it's less than.
Because it has not been maintained since they rebuilt that highway. That ditch has not been cleaned since they built that new highway in there.
So.
And it's in the county right of way, so what are we gonna do?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, there's a ditch. There's a ditch just to the east of Dave Lills, that's about an eighth of a mile long. That.
In the road.
In in the county right of way along the highway, now to go back, this has been an issue. Since they reconstructed that road in sixteen or seventeen. Dave and several people there have been complaining that they didn't like the way the construction was done and that. The the proper dirt work wasn't done, and this is before, and probably any of you were commissioners and it but. It's been a ongoing battle for the better part of eight years, okay, and it it just keeps resurfacing, resurfacing, so. This fall, we sent Brian Schimmelfinnick out to just clean off one little area, two hours and he was gonna.
The water's just turn doesn't rain away, is that the issue?
Water does gotta go across under the highway.
Underneath the highway.
Come and go south and that dick and it's Hagan's own that land where the county road is. They did, they fixed the spot to the north, but this needs to be so that it drains to the south to the. River or river or whatever we wanna call it.
That that.
Right.
Area that, yeah, that. So you you're talking about the first eighth of a mile of a mile and a half drain.
And it's a foot and a half, he said, about he's gotta take out of there, right?
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, he's gotta, he it's it's not a couple hour job, but it's gonna be a couple thousand dollar bill.
With his laser out there to get this clean. I mean, do we clean it or who pays for that being just in the county right of way?
Now, you're talking about a water issue, I, where's the water come from, how much does it sit on, who's it affect, where's it gonna go?
It's a really weird situation, cuz if you go a quarter mile north of there, all the water goes north. It's basically, it's it's sitting at a point like this.
Does it sit just in the county right of way?
Some of the water goes north.
It's across Lills Field and it's in Haggins Field.
Oh, so they're the ones that would like this cleaned out, so it would not sit there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's been an eight.
An ongoing thing since the road was redone, right Brent?
And the ba- yeah, and the battle has was with past commissioners. That they're upset with because they feel that the past commissioners did live up to what they should have done. So it's carrying over into you guys and Boone and I hear it all the time. Okay, and when I mean all the time, I mean weekly down.
So just to clarify this, then before that road was built, that wasn't an issue?
The water was pretty well drained out of there, and you know how drainage ditches get full and they need to be cleaned every so often.
They went in, they went in, when they did that highway project, they replaced all kinds of high, all all kinds of pipe underneath the road, everything, the contractor that was hired. Uh came in, did all the work, and when the contractor came in and did the work and signed off, there were landowners that said, no, they did it wrong. And they, so then what had happened was is the commissioner says, we'll get the contractors back, the contractor came back. Basically said, oh, yeah, well, you know, we gotta come pick this piece of equipment up and then we'll we'll touch it up a little bit. They came back, got the piece of equipment left, and the commissioners paid the contractor, and since then, for eight years, nothing's been done. And it's been a nonstop complaint since two thousand sixteen.
And what is it, what would it cost?
Probably talking about five grand.
Even if it's seven grand, I mean, just let's figure it high.
Figure it high, he's gonna be there at least a day.
Huh?
Figure it high, he's gonna be there at least a day.
Yeah.
A day with a scraper and and some track hole work.
And I mean, how many acres is it affect, how many acres get flooded, if it's two acres, I ain't spending seven thousand dollars.
It's more, it's a, it's a, that whole quarter, uh there's a quarter on each side that drains there. Half section, I would say, wouldn't you Brent?
Last up, the water, the water on the south side or on the east side of the highway goes to the south and the water on the north side of the highway goes to the net, north. It is, I mean, until you go up there and look at it.
Yeah, but see that stuff on the north side goes to the.
How many acres would it help is what I'm trying.
I I don't, I don't have that information.
About.
A couple quarters, at least.
Yeah.
Well, but a couple quarters aren't flooded now because of this.
No, you're just talking about.
But there's fifty, sixty acres that's underwater.
Oh, it is that much, that was my question.
There's at least fifty, sixty acres you can go out there right now and see where you didn't get a crop.
The thing about it is is that it's not gonna get done now this fall.
No, we know that.
So I would suggest that we all go and look at it.
Yeah, and we can do that. Well, I will take you out there and show you.
Yeah, I I believe you.
Boone and I are obviously.
How many times have we been there?
Yeah, more than I wanna be.
We don't need to go there, we will believe you if you gotta take two feet.
Been there more than once.
It's 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 gonna take a full day of.
Trackle because you gotta swing the dirt, a scraper ain't gonna work cuz it's too muddy.
Yep, man, the cuz there's water in there.
That was my next question, couldn't they take their scrapers?
No, because it's sitting there with, it's sitting there with six, eight inches of water in it almost year round.
Okay.
Well, we can table that for now, but.
It has been brought up.
Yeah, it's been brought up and.
Needs to have something done.
Well, it it should go in a minute then, that we will act on it at a later date, whether it's do nothing or.
This fall, we Boone and I thought, oh, if it's gonna take a couple hours, we're gonna get guy in there and end this problem. So when when they were there, they called me and I called Boone and I said, this isn't gonna be a two hour fix. After they set the transit up and they realized there was more dirt in there than than we thought and everybody thought. And so then I said, well, then don't do anything about it, cuz I'm not gonna spend six thousand dollars of county money without interfering with the commissioner.
Right.
And that's all, that's what we left it at.
And this water goes into, it's not gonna affect any landowner down.
No, it goes down into a draw.
It goes to the south.
Only gotta go a mile and a mile from there, and then it gets into a draw, it's not gonna any any date anybody.
Alright.
No.
Okay.
Is anybody gotta get disgruntled about it?
That's what my question was, to tell somebody else.
Well, one person, but we're not mentioning his name.
One person, and we won't mention his name, but we'll tell you at a different date.
Alright. Anything else for Brent? Thank you. Jan is here. The floor is yours.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of abatement forms I need to go through with you.
Right there. Don't wanna trip ya.
Um, as far as these go, I'm looking at pages five through the end. It'll show the pictures of the inside of the property. In which the abatement is being asked for. Yep, I think that watched the card and then I didn't watch.
I have no part of that one.
I know, I'm guessing. So Shonda Ziegler, um on behalf of Conrad Ziegler. Filed an abatement form for years of twenty twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Um, the valuations with land and structure were at two hundred. And fifty four thousand nine fifty in twenty twenty two, and in twenty twenty four it was two hundred and sixty one thousand six hundred. Um, she's asking for a reduction of about a hundred and. Twenty thousand dollars per year. Basically, when I did the reassessment, I went out there, but nobody was home. I'd sent a letter saying, hey, I'd like to see the inside of the house. I wasn't able to get in. Um, so in that case, you have to assume some things. Um, Shonda was back and she gave me the entire tour. That's why you have your pictures. There is a bedroom, a bathroom. And the garage that is finished. Everything else has open. You know, it's not, some of it's not even insulated yet. There's no kitchen, there's no dining room, living room, anything like that. So what I did is I did a reassessment. I took off about twenty-four hundred dollars per year off the valuation because there is no air conditioning and I thought there was. And then I put it at a seventy-five percent unfinished project. And that's where her numbers are coming from.
And the city of Harvey.
They approved it.
The city of Harvey, for your information, has approved it, so we.
They approved it with the thought that, um, so they can't do. Shonda knows that she's not gonna be able to do any work in the property for the next three to five years. Um, after that, she's planning on, well, she's she's in Arizona, I think. Or Nevada or something like that. She's, she would like to come back here and eventually.
Oh, so that would be her eventually.
That's her hope, we don't know, it depends.
Somewhere else now, you know what I mean?
So, um, she asked that we put the valuation down and then, um, I would. With the agreement that I would be able to go in there on a yearly date basis as soon as pro- in as soon as work was being done. So that we could continually update the percent finished of the property.
Sounds like a fair.
That's an easy deal. Motion to approve this abatement. Motion by Brian, second.
Second.
Second by Doc. Any other discussion hearing on all those papers? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So the other abatement that I have is for Brad Gullbert and he's back here. So we had it that, he bought apartment complexes on North Street, right? Um, and so there was a bunch of work that I believe needed to be done and he can explain this much more. In depth, but I had the value at eight hundred and forty-one, four eighty. He recently bought it. For two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and that's what he's asking to have the value placed at. Um, and and again, he was agreeable when we were talking on the phone. That, um, as tenants are able to live in the apartments, that we would. Do another reappraisal in like three to five years as updates were being done and that kind of thing.
Alright, and once again, city Harvey approved it.
Yes, and it says here requesting for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. Did you, was that within the price? I'm not sure what they approved that night.
Twenty-three?
They approved all.
So the twenty-three taxes haven't been paid?
I I paid them with the purchase of of the property.
Oh, there were taxes due, okay.
They didn't pay the taxes, cause they were trying to make a fit with the federal government about, yeah, getting out of the loan that they had.
Sure.
So, okay, we gotta do it and all of it was supposed to be winterized and it wasn't winterized and we have busted pipes in walls and everything, so it's. It's a much bigger project than we initially intended. Yeah, so we're gonna have some fun.
Glad to see you're tackling that.
Trying, yeah.
Well, frozen pipes should be the biggest issue.
Yeah, yeah, we found fifteen broken pipes in the first building and thirty in the next.
No juice, sir.
And we haven't turned the water on on the next one, yeah, we've just been pushing air through it. So, we're gonna find more.
And I think those buildings are only about forty years old.
Yeah, great, great buildings, but when they say winterized, you gotta push the.
There any black mold in them?
There's some mold in the walls behind the urinals or behind the toilets, but I mean, we're gonna rip that stuff out.
Unfortunately, they're not as bad as some people say they are.
No, that's what I was told is black mold everywhere.
Condemned word was not, should have been ever put on there, but I mean, we were trying to replace some toilets and. They've been throwing lipstick on stuff for a while, so we got, we got mold in the floors that were pulling up and we got a lot of work to do, if that's a good way of saying it.
Alright, motion approved. Second by Brian, any other discussion?
I have one other thing here. Um, Sidwell is our GIS mapping company. Um, if they are for the agricultural land valuations. They're the ones that do all of the aerials and figuring out what, you know, bringing in the NRCS web soil survey information. But we're on a contract, so they are, they gave me two different options. We usually contract with them for two years at a time, but they are offering a three year contract as an option. And I'm not about to sign my name on something without going with you guys first. So the two year. Yeah, so the two year, the techno- technology access fee was three hundred and fifty, renews annually. The first year would be fifty-three thirty and the second year would be fifty-seven twenty. Um, with the three year, the access fee is three hundred and fifty dollars yearly. Year one is fifty-two hundred instead of fifty-three thirty. Year two is fifty-five twenty instead of fifty-seven twenty and then obviously there's not a third year. But the third year goes up to fifty-nine eighty. So, I'll just, these are the only ones that I brought along. I think it'd be better to go with a three year because they're the ones, you know, anytime there's a split. So a parcel was a hundred and sixty acres and now you, all of a sudden you have six parcels of varying different acreage. They're the ones that go in and draw out and figure out what soils go where with what parcel, you know, that kind of thing.
And it's cheaper, but that is basically the cost of money. I mean, they're getting the third year payment upfront, so.
Well, and I, do, I think, do they? Dan, do you know, do you remember if they charge a yearly?
My guess is that it would be an annual payment, but.
Yeah, I I think, I rec- I think I remember receiving a bill one year at a time, but we would just be locking in those prices.
Oh, you don't pay it all?
I don't think so, because I've seen, I I I remember, I, don't quote me, but I remember.
You're getting, you're getting a little cheaper just for the security of knowing that they're gonna. Is there any other competing companies that do this?
There are, um, however, we also have the farms program through them. And so they're the ones generating our valuations. Whereas if you go to another company, then you have to find another program to generate your valuations.
What are your wishes? Want to do the three year? You prefer.
Your thoughts, the three year?
I was thinking three year just because I know we're not gonna be going anywhere anytime soon from this company. And they are really good to work with.
Need a motion or is that just part of your thought? Dan, do we need a motion or is that just?
Yeah, you can go ahead and do it now.
And I just got these this morning, so that's why it's kind of a throw it in there.
Make them both one way or the other.
I'll motion to get the three year plan.
Okay, also, yeah, yes, okay, second by Boone, any other discussion? Never say aye. Alright, opposed? Carry.
I can send you a copy of it too.
Anything else?
Should be everything.
You wanna bring up that little issue with the. Really briefly.
Sure, so. I just, I talked to Stan because he's my portfolio holder. Um, we're currently getting caught up on twenty twenty-five mobile home taxes. And there's one gentleman who owes sixty-six dollars. And there's a judgment on him, but I have to do a foreign transfer to Minnesota. To file an execution, cause the judgment has to go from North Dakota to Minnesota. To transfer it, it's two hundred and ninety-five dollars, to execute is fifty-five for a sixty-six dollar bill. So that's where my office is at and doing.
But if, okay, but if you don't do it, then you have no rightfully claim. For anybody else, and that's why you need to do it. Even though it makes no financial sense whatsoever, if you don't do it, what are you gonna do the next time when the person does? Still reside there and so on, so.
You know, and there's, there's, this is the first year that we've had only two small claims. There, some years there's six or seven of them. And none of them, well, all of them range between forty dollars and a hundred and twenty dollars. It's like.
But this is, in that it's out of state and that's where it costs the extra money.
Yep, but you know, if, the worst part is, is I sent him the judgment, he called me, he said, well, I'll have it there in ten days. Ten days is long gone, so.
And you're never probably gonna collect that sixty bucks anyway.
Well, uh, once you file an execution, the sheriff's department goes out in Marshall County, Minnesota and.
If they do it.
But it's procedural, you need to do it because it's in the rules or?
I just, the only thing.
In the laws.
The only thing I don't know is if they can't collect it. I don't know what I do with the finances portion of it.
Yep.
You're doing it the right ways.
That's just something you gotta do.
Yep.
Don't happen very often.
That's just the update, so.
Alright. Alright.
I don't have a schedule or a calendar. For some reason, I was thinking I wanted to be here for something around eleven, but I think, did we move them up? Was that the Fair Board or was that?
Well, we don't have anybody else.
Okay. I don't know, for some reason I was thinking around eleven I had to be here, but I guess.
We we moved.
Oh, county culvert policy, that's why I was sticking around. Never mind, yeah, I don't, I don't mind being here, I just.
Kinda waiting. Then we have Oliver as a little input there, Dan. And he's in court, so.
Well, let's, um, let's go to the culvert policy as soon as those guys come back.
Oh, we don't, you don't have to do it, cause of me. I just, everything else is on the. Okay, I mean, I got no place to go.
I slipped in Mr. Bromke's proposal right behind the existing culvert policy. And it's, uh, in red, which is. It stipulates that only in river crossings, so I mean, there's, there's some updates here.
Oh, okay, we got it, yeah. We got the old one, the first page and the amended one would be. The second page, right, Dan?
Yes.
And in red would be the changes. Correct?
Yeah, and, uh. It states specifically that we're talking about stuff that is in river crossings. As opposed to, you know, I I know, for example, we provided five foot pipe or whatever down in the Sykeston area that. Is not in one of those river crossings, okay?
To summarize it, that would be a big change. This would be a big change.
Which?
He's proposing five foot culverts or bigger in a river crossing.
But five, five foot culverts that's not in a river qua- crossing would be a township issue.
Yep. Correct?
That's the way I see it.
It says over five feet.
Yeah, five feet.
Sixty inches.
They pay for sixty inches.
They pay for fifty-nine, we pay for sixty.
Right.
Well, we wouldn't pay for any of it.
If it's not in a river crossing.
If it's not in a river crossing with the new policy. We pay for for a six footer right now.
One coming up, Brad. That labor box culvert, what's gonna happen there? That's not a river crossing, is it?
Well, if we change the policy.
Comes out of Lake Hiawatha, or comes out of Lake Hiawatha and it winds up in the, I wiped them, but. Where where it's at, it's not in the river.
Right, so.
So.
I'm just using this as.
I'm thinking there's a hundred examples, isn't there?
No, but I, this is just not a hundred.
We have, I mean, I, you guys do know that we have, you guys have. Allowed these townships to take out these little rickety bridges that they have in the townships. That are underneath the township road that is not in a river crossing, alright? I mean, it might be in a drain, but it's not in the river itself. And in the past, you guys have provided pipe and hundreds of thousands of dollars of pipe for about five. Of these projects already, including one down in Sykeston this past year. And now there's another one with the township there that we've kind of preempted to say. Listen, if you guys are gonna take this bridge out, we're gonna provide the pipe. So, I I'm just, you know, you get, there is some issue, some complications that can arise.
But it would be a big change.
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly, but they have already talked to us about this. Because Leon was down there working with them guys on this. Now Leon is not here no more, so what do we do?
Because if, if, if that bridge will, the one thing that I feel safe in saying is, is that little bridge will be there. If they're having to buy all the pipe to put underneath it. That bridge is not going anywhere, cause the township is not gonna be able to afford to do it.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So, I mean, it's kinda where you're drawing the line, where you've done this for six, five, six years now. And now you're gonna change it, even though, you know, I understand why you guys did it.
Well, we haven't done anything yet.
Not, no, but while you've done it in the past, is to get rid of these little rickety bridges in these townships and.
But we also have a conversation of cutting back our spending.
Exactly, exactly, so I mean, like I said, it's a tough decision for you guys. I'm glad I'm not you.
So this, this, this policy's been in effect for over ten years, almost eleven.
Yeah, that's before me at my time and it was more than boxed, little boxed bridges. It was, I think, the whole philosophy was that they couldn't, you know, once it got to that point, townships can't afford it. Whether it's replacing an old one or whether it's a little bridge, either or, and that's why the county was helping them up.
It's safe to assume that ninety to ninety-five percent of the pipes in this county underneath township roads are under fifty, under sixty inches. With the exception of a few of these little bridges. There's not many big pipe. That's not in the wells, one of these, one of these drains that we talked about, correct? There are some, but it's a small percentage.
And back then, the idea was is these old culverts have needed replacing. The county would take care of it, but that's gotten bigger, it, issues have gotten a lot bigger now.
I understand that, but, but these guys aren't gonna be aware that we're changing this.
Well, they'd have to be notified.
They gotta be notified and try to get this done before.
Well, it can't be done before.
No, we're not gonna get done this winter. And I don't, are, are we gonna change this now or are we gonna table this?
Well, that's a question.
You'll have to set a date and you have to let them know if they wanted to do it this.
Number twelve, this policy shall be effective as of January first, twenty twenty-five.
Now, I don't know how. I'm not a lawyer.
Let me ask you a second, how long has this thing been a known issue?
They've been putting it off for two, three years.
Okay, then it's their own downfall. They should have already done this.
Yeah, this has been talked about for two, three years and.
Yeah, I've, I've measured.
Agree with that.
I'm, I measured the bridge two and a half years ago to get the, get the ball rolling on it and figure out what we needed for pipe and. It's just been, you know, it's just been pushed off and pushed off.
It's kind of a deal, you snooze, you lose. I don't get pushed off too far and the expenses are going higher.
Is it beyond use?
No, it's not, there, it it's actually, it's actually a better bridge than the five bridges that we have been taking out. I mean, it's, it's not a good bridge by any means, but it, but it's, uh, it's, it's not like it's gotta be shut down.
This is, this is going to affect January.
First, about two thousand twenty-five, right on the back.
What do you wanna do?
Do we notify them or we just let them learn the hard way?
Well, we gotta decide whether.
Well, Brad, you go notify them.
No, the other thing is, is, is you have the, you also can say, okay, this is a project. That be, we've been working with you on for two years.
Right, we can grandfather it in.
Yeah, and you can say, okay, because we were working with you on this project for two years.
That's what I was.
You know, we can work with you on this, but as be, only because this was brought up to us. And we've discussed it for the previous, past two years, we can grandfather you in, but everything after January twenty twenty-five is no longer done.
But here's the other side of that.
They've had a long time.
How long are you gonna wait? Right, okay, so what costs? Fourteen thousand dollars today is gonna cost twenty-two thousand two years from now. So every time you continue to drag your feet, if you'd have done this when it first was an issue, it wouldn't be an issue.
Well, and is it an issue, or is it a deal where, well, the county's gonna pay for this, we better get it switched, changed out?
Well, part of it is, is that this, this township is also the township that's dealing with the water pipeline going through. Okay, so, it, that, that does, that does play into some of the delay on this. Because this township has been the guinea pig for the water pipeline going through. And they've been dealing with this water pipeline i- issue that township has now for two years, and now they're doing construction there, and that. I, hey, like I said, I'm just relaying the facts, I'm not. You know, so, I agree, they've drugged their feet, but I also know why they have drugged their feet, because they've been dealing with this water pipeline too. So it's a unique situation, to say the least.
We listened to an hour of the water pipe issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Dan on this, they, they, we've been talking about this for years.
Change the policy and.
If we have to grandfather, then we have to grandfather.
I would say not grandfather.
If we do grandfather, there's gotta be a timeline. Well, it's gotta be done in the next count, in, in the next twelve months, and if, hey, if nothing's brought up for another ten months on, on the situation. And I'm sorry, you snooze, you lose like Dan said. But, I mean, they can't say, well, yeah, we wanna do this, but we can't afford to do this till two thousand twenty-eight. Well, holy crap, I mean, these pipes are probably gonna be thirty, forty percent more by then.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. You're really talking about two issues here, do you wanna amend the policy?
I think.
If you, if you want to, then I would entertain a motion to amend the policy, amend the culvert policy as proposed.
And part of it, we have to meet with townships again, and part of our deal is to see what we can do to cut back, save money.
That's right.
One issue right here.
So you follow that, now this over here is a separate issue. So, what we're dealing with now, you wanna amend the culvert, culvert policy?
So move.
Motion by Brian. Second by young Brian.
Brian, Brian.
Brian and Brian. Any other discussion or questions, hearing none, all of you in favor, say aye. Opposed, carried. You know. You wanna deal with, I wouldn't do anything with those guys.
They may not talk to me or doing about it for eight more months.
Right, and they might look at this and say, ah, then we won't do it, or they'll raise Cain, and then we'll deal with it.
And then we'll deal with it.
Right, we're better at, we're ma, we're better at emergency situations versus projecting all the wrong ways, aren't we?
Exactly. And we can be a little sympathetic to the fact that we have talked.
Why deal with fourth and short when you could deal with fourth and twenty? Well, it's something like that.
I mean. You know, that's better than nothing.
But, yeah, I mean, something needs to be, and this doesn't affect the water board, okay, because this is basically township roads. Water boards assess drains and in river crossings, so, I mean, so it, it, I think this probably makes sense.
I think this clears up a lot of stuff.
Well, yeah.
There's always been some confusion on that.
You guys have bought a lot of pipe, and helped.
Okay, let's start at the beginning here, election of officers and portfolio assignments. Typically, every year, well, this, this month, we change. But not change, but reelect. Reorganize.
But it says till twenty-five December.
Well, I guess.
You, you do this today so that when you come back here in January.
Right.
Your officers are.
Your officers are in place, same with portfolio assignments, and I think last year, uh. I was elected chairman in December, we talked about it in December, and it's, yeah, typically the chairman's responsibility to assign them. But we kinda talked about it, didn't we? See who wants and what, or what would be the best fit, or something like that.
And technically, those are in place through twenty twenty-five, but you can change them.
Oh, they are through twenty-five?
So it's a, it's a two, it's a two year thing, but it doesn't mean you can't revisit it.
Oh, right. All right, hearing that. I would entertain a motion or a nomination for chairman. Don't everybody speak at once.
I'll nominate Boone.
Nomination, Boone. Any other nominations?
You wanna take it another year?
Do I wanna take it another year?
Oh, yeah, you would need to have a second on this first.
Oh, on the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second on the nomination for Boone?
I'll second this.
Seconded by Brian, okay, are there any further nominations?
I will nominate Dennis.
Well. You're doing a lot of typing over there.
Yeah. You always expect these things to go smoother.
You were asking me if I would do it again, I, I would if people want me to, but it's up, it's up to you guys.
Well.
I didn't think we even had to do this today, because it said until, till twenty-five, but.
Well, it's, twenty-five is the portfolio assignment, but the election of officers is every year. Now, it can be the same people, but it's, that's every year.
What, uh, different officers are there?
Just chairman, vice chairman. Got it, Dan?
So far.
I lost where we were.
We need a second for.
Okay, you made a nomination of Dennis.
Dennis, and we need a second.
You need a second, is there a second for Dennis's nomination?
I'll second.
Seconding again, all right. We're gonna ask for further nominations, do you, I guess we do.
Well, you can't, I mean.
I would be vice chairman if Dennis wanted to be chairman, I wouldn't make it that easy.
Robert's Rules of Order would say, you would have to. Remove your name.
He could, he could decline it, if you want to, and then you can deal with the. The other motion that you have on the floor.
So if I decline me as being a chairman.
Let's say we all vote for you as chairman, you'd have to decline that.
Right.
And, we're getting to a angle here, because there's only five of us.
Right.
You just need to say that, I'll enter it into the minutes here, and then you can deal with the motion that you have on the floor.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominate, or, uh. Motion for nomination to cease, that's what I'm trying to say. Is that right, Dan? So far? Second?
Second.
Second, all right. All right, now we vote, right?
Well, only if you want to be considered here.
I will decline it.
So you're declining before the vote?
Oh, well. I will decline it.
You're declining your nomination?
Yes.
Okay, this is way deep in Robert's Rules of Order. Okay. Hearing that Boone is declined. Is, well, no, we stopped the vote, right?
And cast, you can, you can have the mo, you know.
Make a motion for unanimous.
Approval of.
Approval of Dennis. Is there a motion for unanimous approval of Dennis?
That can be Brian's or Brian's motion, if you want it to be, now you know that, what you know. Brian Laut is the one, but, wait here, I'm sorry. Danny Maxwell is the one who made the motion, so if you want that to be the. To unanimously cast Dennis as the chairman.
I have to re-cast that? Or?
Tell, tell me that's what you want.
That's what I want.
Okay.
See, typically, if there's two, you would vote, typically, if only one's nominated, you cast an unanimous ballot for the only one that's nominated, and then you have it. So, but in this case, it gets muddier.
It is, because now, now you can vote on it, because.
All of us in favor of Dennis being chairman for two thousand twenty-five, seeking five to say aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay.
Did you, did you really vote against that? Did that just happen? Are there witnesses here?
Nominations are open for vice chairman.
Well, I'll nominate Boone, he's willing to do that.
Okay.
And I will do that.
Any, I need a second. Second by Brian, any other nominations? Hearing none, motion for nomination to cease, and to cast the unanimous ballot for Dan. Yes, you. Motion by Brian, second. Second by Doc. All of the favors, the aye. Opposed, carried, all right, that second one went way smoother than the first.
I think I got that.
You all got educated on that deal.
Yeah, Robert's Rule of Order.
Just, just, just pause for five seconds here, I gotta find something, and then I'll, I'll be good.
Well, in the meantime, you all can look at this, there's nothing to do with Dan, look at the two thousand twenty-five. Meeting dates. Is there anything there that, you know, and these can be changed? As time goes on.
I was gonna say, we're finally back to.
Yeah, there's, there's some.
I might be thinking of this year.
I think it's three and nine.
Now, this year was six and six, this year was lots of Thursday, just the way Tuesdays fell, so, okay. Staple that up to your wall. And obviously, Dan lets us know when and if and all that.
Anything changes?
Okay, so. Let's see.
Okay, all right, so I guess beer and liquor licenses would be.
All right, you're, you're caught up, all right, beer and liquor license applications and requests.
All of them have been submitted, they're the same ones that we've had, including Peas and Country Club, and they also operate at Festival Hall periodically. Flatland Trailblazers only operates during the course of Wells County Fair. Uh, K A L R, which is the Bremen Bar, Cotalco Fuel, south of Harvey, and the Peaceful Valley Golf Course in Harvey. So I would need approval for those.
Before we get that, I got a question, oh, uh. We ran into a problem last year at Festival Hall, and what was that again?
It's whether or not, when, if, or, if it rained, whether or not they can move inside the festival hall, and I believe the license now says. Festival Hall on it, because you guys authorized that.
So this coming here.
Should not be an issue, if we should have rain, and Flatland Trailblazer wants to move from their tiki bar inside the festival hall, because events going there, they should be able to do that.
It's all on the license.
It's all done now.
Remember last year?
Yeah, I know.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Boone, second by Doc. All of the favors, say aye. Opposed, carried. Says these suppositories.
We wanna be able to use not suppositories.
I was just seeing if you guys are paying attention, obviously, only a couple of you are.
I was sitting over here going, look at that.
And Dan says you wanna use as many as possible. Obviously, the three banks, correct?
We wanna be able to use all three, and move our money where. The best rates are, or whatever the case may be.
Motion to approve.
The best bank for.
Motion by Boone, second by Brian, any other questions on that? All of the favors, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. All right, here and authorization, there's a bunch of.
See you guys on private.
A lot of this stuff is related to circumstances where we're either paying out school districts, townships, ambulance districts. Uh, fire departments, election workers, et cetera, all those things that. Don't necessarily, you know, everything else typically comes to you for approval of payment, so in other words, every check that we wrote here. Is sent over in my deputy's office right now, now I sent her a text after you approved them, then she puts them in the mail. But for these things, you don't need to authorize that, Harvey Public Schools is entitled to their money, the peasant ambulance is entitled to their money, so what you're doing here. Is merely authorizing my office to pay these people when their taxes are collected, so.
The once a year thing that we just need to do, motion to do that. Motion by Brian, second by Doc. All of the favors, say aye. Opposed, carried. Uh, moving down, we moving right along.
No, it is to that south.
South Central Dakota Regional Council, once again, once a year, we need to talk about if we want to. Continue to belong to that organization.
I just, uh, I sent a text to Dan that it just got from, they always have grants available. And, Dan, when you get that, it, it wants that information to get to all the townships. If you could forward that on, and probably to the fellow commissioners.
Okay. So what if they actually use the money as, for?
Well, it's like, uh, they've got a lot of projects around the state, anything starting new from. Butcher shop in Carrington to whatever they'll either loan it or grant or whatever, kinda like, um.
We always belong to it, I think all. Seven or eight?
There, there's nine.
Or nine?
Nine counties are in this? Yeah.
And it costs us how much a year?
About, uh, give or take, it's about ten thou, ninety-six eighty-five is the exact amount, yes.
I believe, uh, some of the local stuff, and then potter's, you know, and. We've gotten way more money back out of this than we've spent, or you said, is that what we're saying? If we get the people to apply for it, um, one of the guys on the board for approval was Jason Schneider from Harvard. Okay. He's on the J D A board too. And, right, Spencer was on, and he is supposed to be making this information available. This. I'll make a motion, keep doing this. Because J D A is a good thing if it's handled right.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's part of this, I mean, part of how you can do this.
Well, all right, you got a motion, okay, this is a motion, this is a second.
I'll say.
Second, any other questions, discussion? The flip side of that is, is it worth ten grand a year, because if no one applies for it, and the money sits there. That's ten thousand a year that county taxpayers have.
The, the flip side of that is, is for example, they might be conducting a housing study. Okay, so they go to all this trouble to do this and provide you with the data that you need to apply for, not only them, but other grants that exist. And if you don't do anything with it, Allah, the city of Harvey, that's your own fault, okay, we can sit and, we, you know, I, second year I was in Harvey. I was on a group that studied housing in Harvey, and you know what we did with it? That's fifteen years ago, absolutely nothing, and what's still an issue in Harvey? Housing, ain't gonna go away, you gotta actually do something.
A lot of, a lot of the grant work that Paul Gunderson, rest in peace, sold in, was research from this.
So there, there, there's more things there than just grants, they do a lot of.
Well, right, and, and, yeah, Phil and Brian, whoever, that they do, it's more than a J D A. I mean, they do-
It is, but I just-
A number of things that help regionally that a small town or county could do by themselves.
And one of, one of the things that's in the operation right now is, you hear a lot about tech center?
Yeah.
Harvey deal? Lamo- Laramore, Laramore and Lemoore, one of them down there. They're helping them organize to do like that.
So, can a business get some from both, J D A and-
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think, I don't think people realize that.
I know, that's-
Well, it's like Dan says, that people do not know that there's resources out there that are available.
Yeah, that's why, Dan, if it's clear, the, every time I get some of the stuff, I'm gonna forward to you because that's one way-
We don't wanna tell Brian too much, he might be building a new butcher shop.
Well, we hope, we hope he does.
That would be a good deal. Still kept waiting to take me along with butcher shop yesterday.
Oh, quiet.
I told him that and he's- You guys went to the butcher shop yesterday?
He did.
They were gonna putter around for dinner and I, he didn't wanna go, I asked him, or he didn't wanna go.
I didn't know they had head cheese until they said it.
I went and I come back and ate and we left.
You had a small purchase?
Hundred bucks is all.
Nice, bad.
And he was directed to bring samples today, we'll see if he's got those.
No, there is none.
Well, you can wait on Friday and bring it to the Christmas party.
We're gonna discuss that, but we gotta get the rest of this done first.
Are you in a hurry again?
No.
I need a, I need a vote on that then.
Okay, motion to approve. You forgot what we're talking about.
The South Central.
I thought we did. It's moved in a second.
I made a motion.
Oh, yeah, all those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, tax waivers for, for, for closed properties, just need a motion.
We had, we had five properties that did not sell, uh, they're vacant lots in all cases, and they have enormous specials on them. So what you're being asked to do, those properties were sold, three of them, or two of them, excuse me, to the city of Bowden and the other three to the city of Harvey. And you're being asked to waive the taxes. You're out virtually nothing. Those two cities are out big time here. Okay, there's, there's all the specials that they had set up for these properties, but they understand that, okay? So City Harvey is gonna lose, miss out on like fifty grand here, but there ain't no way anybody's gonna buy those properties.
Do we just turn them over to, how, how?
We sell them to them for a dollar.
Okay, that's it.
And, but this is a, this is a formality that you have to do to waive those taxes, so I could-
So the back taxes aren't on them anymore.
Right.
So. The special.
As long as they understand.
Are the specials still on?
The specials gotta go too, all of the taxes, you're missing, you're missing out on hundred and fifty bucks here, hundred and fif- they're missing out on twenty-five grand for this and because they had to go to all the trouble to tear down the houses of the people who just left their dilapidated crap for somebody else to clean up.
But they've also got the ability to have somebody rebuild and get back on the tax roll.
They get it back on the tax roll, that's the, that's why they want these properties in the first place, they benefit, so does everybody else by getting them back on the tax roll.
And they'll never get them back on the tax roll if they have this big tax hanging over it, it's kind of like a fresh start thing. Anyway, motion to approve.
Motion, okay.
Motion by Brian, second.
I'll second.
Second by Boone, all of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Transfer COVID relief to the general fund, Dan, uh, you can maybe just be just, there's a minor amount there. And just transfer to the general fund because you have to spend it all and, well.
And te- the reason it's still there, when we pay out for the projects, we pay like the city of Bowden and we pay it right out of that fund. But the part that's still lingering there is the part that went to the salary and benefits of your employees.
Right.
Okay, we can't pull it from there every month because it wouldn't work in our payroll system. So you're being asked to transfer what amounts to be two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the exact amount here, I've got it written down where you have, two thirty-five, four fifty-seven, twenty-seven. And it's not a minor amount of money, but it's money that's already been spent, now we just have to move it to where it's spending from.
Do we need a motion to move it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move that, second.
Alright, all of the favors, say aye.
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 Opposed, carry. Am I forgetting anything here? Uh, okay, well, County Fair, you see where that's at. Uh, commission, next commission meeting, six county meeting, and then two things left, Cr- Christmas Social, leave that till last. But not lastly, before that, we'll talk about the six county meeting yesterday and the summary and Dennis, the board's yours.
Well, I'll just a couple of things, you guys that were there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, do it, but number one is they, uh, wanna raise our dues because to make it cover our expenses.
For the meetings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was number one, um.
That did happen.
Yep.
Yeah.
That did happen.
And then the other thing, a big discussion was on sharing a, um, s- uh, scale weight.
Truck regulatory.
Person to try to find somebody full-time, shared by all six counties.
And Kidder County has the scales.
Right.
They wanted it, and there's auditor in Carrington. Right, wants to-
Will pursue.
Will send out information or do whatever for the six counties.
Oh, to hire someone?
Yes, I, I try to get this, to make this work.
Oh, oh.
It's gonna be a big deal to try to make this work in six counties. And hire somebody. We were talking about how to hire them, what to pay them.
Oh, yeah.
And they're gotta have benefits, they gotta have, where are they staying, are they gonna have motels? When they're in one end of the county to the other, or are they gonna go back and try to catch somebody back here, or do?
Well, they need to have a budget, but I'm sure then one county smaller than the others, they don't wanna pay a six.
As much.
Um, Dan had a good point, I believe, Dan, I'm just quoting here, but it's gonna be at a minimum of about twenty thousand per county.
Be a minimum of twenty grand a year, and I would say likelihood is it will be more than that, it'll probably be closer to thirty. But a minimum of twenty for salary and benefits for a full-time employee. For one employee. But this doesn't involve scales, it doesn't involve vehicles, it doesn't involve travel, with all of those things.
However, however, you can re- recoup that in fines in a couple of weeks, possibly.
Say that, um, some of the other counties have, have done, have-
Have done some.
Collected some pretty big money.
Y- y- and here's what will happen, you'll, you'll get the person and at, at first there'll be all kinds of fines. And then pretty soon people will obey, and then you'll cut the position and what will happen.
They'll start it all over.
Start it all over again. But I don't know if Kidder County has any interest in being involved in this because they have their own setup right now, and that's the take that I got from them is that-
They're not sure. They don't like to use it though, do they?
Their, their sheriff won't do it. Terry won't do it. That's, that's the primary crux of the thing, is you're not gonna get a sheriff to do this because that's somebody that needs to be reelected. You gotta hire a deputy that can go to school and do this, because they gotta be-
Law enforcement guy.
A law enforcement guy that has to do this.
Alright.
You just can't, he's gotta go through classes to do this.
Well, it's no different than the state have people on state highways, they're, they're regular.
Regular truck regulators. But they don't have to be elected, so that's why they can do their job.
Well, but if this guy was hired, this, you wouldn't have to be elected either.
No, you're correct, and that, but that's why it's not gonna be a sheriff.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd have to have probably a committee with all the counties in order to do this hiring and all that too. Um, I kinda had the feeling that Kidder was interested in it though.
You think so? Cause I got the distinct impression that- I did too, but see, Mitleiter's done. And that guy that was sitting behind you guys with the red beard is taking Mitleiter's spot.
And he used to be a-
And he used to be a deputy in steel, that's how he got this. So there's a long story behind all this.
Mitleiter, who's Mitleiter?
Danny Mitleiter's been there for eight or-
Gee, he's a commissioner.
Yeah, he was. Down in Bismarck, he's a little short guy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He's done, and ended December here. The other guy beat him out. For Kidder County.
Got, oh, so I was gonna say-
He's not gonna be a commissioner anymore.
I know, but what's that have to do with scales? So he was against scales?
Well, this-
Point is, this guy that took over for him is a deputy, and they, they kinda think he's got an ulterior motive to get the price up and sheriff needs to go back to that job.
Cause we, you know, we talked about what it would cost salary and benefits, and he said, well, if you pay that guy more than-
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna want that.
Yeah, that's what that guy said.
Big equality issue.
Yes.
But you know what, he's the guy that should be the truck regulator, he's already got these deputy.
He's already.
A good truck regulator.
If he's a commissioner and be a truck regulator, he could do handle the job, cause I think he's got the attitude for it.
Then there, there it is, but anyway, to shorten this up, each county's supposed to mull this over.
Right.
Ideas, information, give to the auditors, they're gonna communicate.
Well, I, I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Well, we've talked about before and-
Nothing's ever gotten done.
It kinda got a little bit more traction now, put it that way. The other thing that I got out of it, um, Foster County brought up a bunch of the problems that they're having with the water pipeline and not being ready for zoning and all the paperwork. So we had a meeting a while back with those guys, and I don't know if we're-
Dan and I were at it.
If we're in position to handle that any better than they are or not, I don't know.
Not really. But we ain't gotta worry about it for two years.
Well, but-
But we need to get on this, don't, I mean, that was what our take was on it that night. They're not, you know, they're, they're in their three mile stretch in Wells County, they're not coming back, in my understanding, until twenty twenty-seven to Wells County. So we've got a little while here for at least five of the townships to, they're gonna be directly impacted by this, and it's probably more like ten, but five of them for sure will be directly impacted. But the thing is, everybody wants this outfit to toe the line and follow every rule and every rag. Meanwhile, the thirty-eight hundred people that live here don't think they should have to follow anything. Isn't it ironic that the very people who want these things enforced don't wanna have to follow them themselves? And so, yeah, I, those townships, they've been talked to and it's been tried to sell them, get, you know, make sure your stuff is up to date and make sure you, you know, you follow through and so on and so forth. I also hear in Foster County, or in Southern Wells County, that they're doing a good job taking care of the roads that they're are considered their-
Down there.
You mean Gersenverge people?
Yeah, oh, yeah. The same miles that they've worked on, that, yes, Brent Spinn down there, I mean, he would vouch for it, he hasn't had no real complaints.
We've got a little different issue, the issue in Foster County is they're cutting through roads.
Yeah, the highways.
And they're worrying about that.
Yeah.
In the people.
And they don't, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have a zoning board.
Nope.
So, whose fault, that's not Gersenverge's fault.
No, no, and even when they were in here, they were very willing to work with us, Gersenverge, so. So anyway, that, that's just briefly, there, we spent way more time we needed doing that down there, but whatever. Uh, the other thing is, and Dan mentioned earlier, the Prairie Dog Funds, or hopefully those buckets can be moved up into our favor more than some of the other things.
Is that gonna happen?
Attorney, there was a lot of times-
The upcoming legislature would have to change that.
Yeah.
But our bucket's full right now for this, so we're gonna get money.
We're gonna get money in, when are we, March, April?
There'll be sometime in the late winter.
Yeah.
And the state's attorney, every county is either can't find one or having problems or whatever. And the whole issue is, is the rule is so outdated that they have to live in the county rank in order to run for it. Aaron Burst was there, he suggested that there's ways to get around it, but, uh, like, we appointed
Oliver.
Oliver, and so when his, when that term gets up, he's gonna have to run unless he recommended if you can change it to appoint a physician, would be one way to do it, but we found out that didn't work for us before.
It was close, with education, I think it would.
Yeah, it wasn't, there was a poor education there as far as why it was done, I think, next time it'll pass.
And it'd make it easier for counties to probably share somebody and all that stuff too, so.
If they were appointed and not elected?
Well.
Or which way?
Both, yeah. That's one way to look, to start sharing or whatever, so. Is any more to that, Dan, that you got or Brian?
No, that's about what it was.
It's, um-
No, and if it's not an issue for you today in a rural county, it soon will be.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't know what you, everybody's waiting for, and I'm not talking specifically Wells County. You know, the very thing that we asked the voters to vote on was to prevent a circumstance like the one we had.
Yep.
And five minutes after the election? Your state's attorney resigns, what do you got left?
Yeah, and we were very lucky to have somebody interested in that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Those guys down there, if they don't, whoever they look for, they either wanna live in Bismarck or Jamesston, they don't wanna live in those counties down there.
That's the biggest.
That's a rough deal.
We're more rural than they are.
Well, no, our guy lives in Grand Forks, so.
Well, but I-
And, and well, and, and the, the, the whole deal with this is, you know, the, the public wants to have a say on who their state's attorney is. Out of the thirty-eight hundred people in Wells County, how many of them have day-to-day contact with the state's attorney, whether it was Kathleen or somebody else? Out of thirty-eight hundred, how many?
I agree.
So, making this a voteable issue makes about as much sense as-
You know, and times have changed, i- i- early in the board, and now I'm gonna pick on certain people, but we got all bent out of shape. If Kathleen wasn't in her office at eight o'clock in the morning, by God, she should be there. Now we got no trouble with Oliver being in Grand Forks all the time.
No, but you know what? Oliver will get back to you.
Yeah.
Ours never did.
That was an issue, but no, it was specifically-
Talk about issues.
No.
That was an issue.
The issue was being in her office, she needed to, you know, or that person, well, as time goes on with, with, with cell phones and
She did emails and all that.
And she didn't do that, you're right.
She didn't call your, call you back either, Oliver calls you back.
But it's all funny is, a lot of those counties have the same issue we had.
Yes, oh, I understand.
And in, and in Dan's defense, why would you ever call a state's attorney? Of the thirty-eight hundred people, probably thirty-seven hundred and fifty of them would never have a reason to call or contact a state's attorney.
And they're not obligated to do personal stuff, so.
No, Kathleen once told me ninety percent of the people that come into her office wanted free legal advice. Well, that's not her job, you know, it's a that, I, and there were other issues though, not on that bandwagon, but that's why in the big scope of things that they don't have to live in the county, you know, times have changed, but till the law changes.
And having, having an appointed one, if you got a bad one, turn the page.
There you go, yeah.
Out the door. If you're elected, welcome home, you're here, do whatever you'd like.
For four years, yeah.
And that's what, uh, Kidder County's got going on right now.
Absolutely. You'd be way better off with-
Lot of them out, but they can't.
They have a bad state's attorney, and it's elected, and he lives there.
So there's just a couple of small things, one person, I don't know where they were from, brought up, um, uh, performance.
Oh, yeah.
Reviews. I'm not for that, we all heard that at school, like merit pay and all that crap, yeah, you got use good teachers, you got other teachers, who's the judge that? Who's the judge who's doing work here, you know? I, I think it caused a big morale problem, but that's my thinking, I know you might wanna add to it.
Definitely, and, and how do you quantify quality? Okay, that becomes a subjective area too.
Really?
So in my, in my former profession, people talked about advanced degrees, and advanced degree doesn't make you any better at what you do. Okay, uh, that comes from in here. Alright, so that right there, you know, you can have people running all over to professional development stuff, spending your money to go here and there. Well, you, you know, your kids aren't getting an education, did that really make you a better employee? So, no, I, I'm not, I've listened to merit pay arguments for thirty, forty years, and-
And we all know, we got, we got tone points.
Theory it makes sense, but it's impossible to implement.
But we've got a salary schedule, and I mean, the questions that were popping up yesterday is well, you just don't follow that, what, yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, you either have it or you don't.
Couple counties down there though, in the past, they kinda just shoot from the hip when it comes to some of them salaries, they don't have much of a schedule, right? I, I can't put it that.
The other thing, what, what you might think is a really good employee here, I may think, well, I don't think they're.
Well, it's extremely subjective, or that person may be good in one area and poor in another, and.
Yeah, so anyway, that, that was a discussion that went off, well, the last thing was, somebody also brought up a policy. For all of your, uh, volunteer responders, like, uh, fire departments.
Ambulance.
Right, and if they get called out, they're leaving their job, are they gonna deduct their pay, that's what they were asking, and I spoke about it. I think absolutely not, I think they should be given that then, but we're so lucky to have good volunteer people. To do fire department, ambulance, and stuff like that.
Well, if they're a county employee, is what you're saying, oh my, yeah, that's.
They were, they were gonna deduct their pay for.
Well.
Napoleon, Napoleon John Deere, they said that yesterday, Napoleon John Deere.
Won't let them go.
They don't let them go, if they're on the volunteer fire stuff or that, they don't let them go.
You know, and Brian, you're on that, how many of your guys would probably not show up if they got their pay deducted?
None of them people work, they're all self-employed.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Well, they are, but just think.
Yeah.
Co-op, I think, lets them go anytime, and they, if you gotta go, you go.
Well.
There'd be certain situations where, you know.
Well, the discussion wanted to have a cap and every, that, the, one example was prairie fires, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And it would be different if you had all week long and week after week of that, that'd be a different story.
I'm trying to rationalize why John Deere wouldn't let them go, but I suppose if you're out in a farmer's yard and you got this tractor tore apart and wind's blowing, and now you gotta. Go for a fire call and you're gone for three hours.
Yeah, yeah. Then the last thing that I got is, uh, February eighteenth and nineteenth, Association of Counties is having the legislative get together again. And I think it was last year, went to, that's really good, you guys, you got an opportunity to go to it. Cause you get to ask questions of legislators and all that stuff too, so.
Okay.
Um, hey, you guys got anything else?
I think that, I think that was a sixty dollar deal, right?
Sixty or ninety?
Yeah, it's, it, it replaces our, we used to have, uh, what did you call it?
Cause the first day you listen to stuff, on the second, the second day, that move you go up to the Capitol.
If you want.
If you want. They didn't talk about any legislative issues that as commissioners, you should talk to your representatives or anything like that?
There was a representative there and, uh.
He said how good the meeting was.
Well, but Aaron Burst brought up the fact of the, uh, uh, tax repeal got defeated. And so it was a question about some reform, and, uh, I don't know, what'd you guys get out of that?
There's, there's, there's some reform coming somehow, and.
Well, it'll be thirty bills.
Exactly, they're gonna sort it down.
Question is, though, how are you gonna pay for it?
Right, just like Robert Irving, the, the, uh, Senator that was there, he said, taxes are like the blue. If you squash it here, it's gonna come out somewhere.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, right.
Something, something's gotta pay for it.
That's right.
But that will, that will be the predominant, that's, that's primary taxes, so.